They called us on Friday and said it would affect us and we never did.
We thought all of their.
Yeah, but this is for that outage for the school, all its schedules and they called us on Friday, but then when I looked at the outage map, we weren't included at all. So I thought, well, maybe we're not going to. So you were out between ten thirty and? Oneish?
Team ten thirty on the.
Okay. Cause we were questioning that, Mike thought they were delayed.
Well, seven thirty on the button, power went out and roughly an hour and just after it was like eleven thirty five or something like that.
Well, good thing I got the packet up to you guys this morning. I was doing it because I thought I wouldn't have access to anything in here. I'm like, I need to get this to you guys early.
Okay, six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. I will commence with the pledge of allegiance unless there is an objection. Uh Christina, you've got the role, I assume?
Yep.
Now that we need to approve this evening's agenda.
Oh, through. Thanks, agenda.
Motion to approve. But a second, a little second, but thank you, sir. Any discussion on it? All's in favor? I. Close. What's in carries? Old business.
Uh, once the full packet, the hearing, everyone's just the agenda.
Here we go.
Here we go. All right, uh, letter E A is an update for the um, facility. Field report seven and progress meeting uh, number seven are attached to the agenda. Does anyone have any questions? From that meeting uh, that myself or like could field?
No, I'm not.
But.
I think that was the one maybe missed from. Is that right? No?
No, this one is.
This one is the one you needed to.
I'm it.
Um, there's no questions to the field report. I'll move on to um, the change order four and supplemental. On for the silt fence. You may recall at the uh, council meeting two weeks ago, I approved, I included the documentation from the NPCA sending everything was good. Um, they made it through their first inspection. This was actually one of the requests that they add. Um, and was happening in the background after the NPCA sent the report, they're requesting an additional three hundred feet of silt fencing. On the northwest side of the property near the um, the wet area for the remainder of the project. And TNT has provided labor and materials to the two hundred two thousand three hundred thirty seven dollars. Um, this is really just for information and conversation tonight. Um, I can go ahead and approve it if I don't have any negatives tonight. Or I can wait until October's meeting and have you guys approve it officially, but it has to be done in the NPCA's request.
Isn't it already so tense going?
Uh, Mike, can you help?
Yes, it is.
This was additional request. Yes.
Is there like major runoff there?
Well, I don't really understand this request myself, but it's NPCA and there's really no biting them.
Well, I wouldn't think we'd want to do it unless there would be a risk of uh, a revisit by the most folks and.
I think they have to revisit again anyway, right? For the uh, final.
I'm sure they'll, I'm sure they'll be back.
Yeah, they'll be back.
If they don't see this, I'm sure they won't be happy.
Yeah, so and this is again my contemporary events, right during construction.
Yeah.
From the. So I don't think we want to risk them to shut down.
Yeah.
My work finds.
Yeah.
Right. And it's a small amount, you know, I just want to make sure I'm including you guys in that.
Thank you, and I don't think you have any.
Pushback on?
Pushback on this, but sooner we get it.
Get it authorized. Okay, I'll just sign it and send it up. Um, that takes care of our A unless anybody has any questions.
Meeting Thursday?
Meeting Thursday, ten thirty here. No. Just note and move forward. Um, three B, um, the main street redevelopment project. Uh, I met with the realtor on the twelfth last Monday. Um, in regards to that project as well as the library project, which I'll move on to when I'm done. Um, in regards to the resale of those parcels, so that kind of um. Baby steps into the sale of the property. I'm still waiting to do the final land con- uh, combination and um, parcel descriptions and. Conveyance of that one point eight seven feet to the theater. So there's some deed documentation I still have to move forward on before we can truly list that. Um, I want to make sure that all of that legal stuff is completed before getting into the purchase of the units at all. So just don't slow it down anymore.
Is this side of building taking on water or something? Do you know anything carved in the river?
So there's no uh, drain tile along the north of Harvard of this building as well as Anderson's suburbs. And because uh, their thirty two main, the rear section was a basement that obviously got dug out. Um, in the process of digging that out and then backfilling it with new material, the settling of that has caused, you know.
Oh, sorry, just a little spot.
Plus, yeah, plus all the rain is is causing it to settle in in that area and Don Meyer is not done. Um, we're at the process, the the point in the process right now where JD Construction is um. Trying to work into their timeline this week and next week to do the final reconstruction of the theater wall and then cut down the remaining foundation of the three properties. And then they'll be doing some um, some weatherproofing near that surface area of the two buildings so that there isn't any final issue. Then when uh, um, Don Meyer comes back and brings the rain better up, then they'll grade it back towards the alley. Whichever direction we want it to go, so it doesn't funnel to the sides right now. Yeah, so still a process, can't really stop the rain, but yeah. I think what you're seeing at those funnels and I don't think it's us that's doing it, I think it's the um. Maintenance staff from Anderson's is kind of making a little, just she's trying to get it to funnel away from their area temporarily. Um, I've been working um, with their manager. And I think the shade store is working towards adding some commercial um, drain tile and um, downspouts to the back of the original section at Anderson's somewhere. Cause there's nothing on that.
If you mean the.
Other system, yeah. Uh, last I spoke with them because. The city hall has that little additional bump up of um, brick onto this existing building. They might be um, taking it this way, resting it on there and then following it to Main Street. I don't know yet. I I need to get involved in wherever their plan is. They just know they need to tunnel it in one direction. It's just a really long run. And because the slope of that portion of the building is so steep, it's gonna run hard and fast each time it rains, not to mention the snow melt. So they have a challenge. They need commercial gutter systems on that section of the building.
And what about the uh, anything on the sidewalk here, the little?
So JD is gonna work and fill that up. Um, Mike and I had originally talked about us being able to do it because it's just that one hole. But I think Jim and Don will be able to fill that in.
Good.
There's a couple of concrete um, contractors that are working in the area. He said worst case scenario, we work with Corseans. And try to see if they can just bring in some to fix that up. And I told him if he had the means and the resources to do it, it would take um, take something off of our plates. Any other questions on that project? Um, okay, so moving down to the library. Uh, again, like I stated earlier, I met with the realtor. Uh, we are in the process of working on some surveying. Issues, the attachment that I sent to you from uh, Matt Murray shows that. In the construction of the existing library building, because the city owns the old lumberyard and that parcel was kind of. It was two parcels. They just plopped that building right in the middle. So you can see where that aerial is in the attachment that Murray serves where you've got some uh, potential lot line issues. Yeah. Um. In looking at the flat map. The city owns. I think it's even ten through sixteen, that's ten through sixteen. What we don't know is where the parcel line separates between um. The library and the old lumberyard. And. My brainchild was when the lumberyard gets potentially resold and we take it off of the city's hands. That could be two different owners between the library and that building. So I'm gonna work with Matt Murray to try to find where those. Uh, blocks of land are on the flat map and where that lot line has to be in order for it to be clear title there.
Who's the black line there? Just an estimate where it'll be then? Um, white line is where it is and.
That is correct. Yep, the yellow line is where it really is, Miriam. Um, the other, the other potential issue uh, we could have is the um. The north wall of the library is also very close to the owner to the north.
Yeah, according to this. Not close.
Right.
So when they built the library building, that was, that was from lumberyard, Northwood?
Yeah, Northwood's builder, but.
Right.
I mean, wasn't that their office or something?
So they. That's what I thought originally. I was mistaken. Miriam corrected me. No.
They have a little thing here on the inside that building.
The, the city built us from scratch.
Uh, I don't think the city built it.
No, Northwood's lumber did after the confusion or wherever the post.
The post office was supposed to be.
Post offices where, where the post office is now is where the library was supposed to be and the city bought that. And then. It ended up, I don't know whether they allocated this ground board or what, and then Northwood's lumber.
I don't know.
Built the library?
Built the library.
At their expense?
Well, not the Tony at their expense. They, the friends of the library, or what do you want to call the group that was around then, actually um. Fund raised for those dollars and it had already been put into the other building and then the city actually had to take it out, put it over there, but. It, it, I was not around then.
How, however it transpired, it got stuck um, on a lot. That. Obviously, there was no property line. Why no, really, no, I think so.
That was by quite, by quite far away with it is how can you build a building when they don't know where the property line is?
Depending upon what year it was done, John, I can honestly tell you that my experience with planning zoning for the city, there's really nothing recorded. Um, it's very vague. Um, knowing where lot lines and um.
Yeah.
And parcel property points are, was just assumed, I would say nineties and back.
And this was a nineteen nineties project?
Project, yeah. I, I, I find that repeatedly as properties, residential and commercial, who's on turnover.
Christina, do you know that the city used to own the property? I don't know if that's more south than west, but um. The one that Natasha?
Uh, not to my knowledge.
I just wondered why they built so close, but who knows back then?
Yeah, and I don't know which came first on that chicken and egg medium. I don't, I, my guess is that the bakery can after.
Yes.
An age.
Yes.
You probably have a timeline for business.
Used to be.
Video store.
Right, before that, it was forming a media.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So anyway, uh, circling back to my conversation with the realtors, uh, we're gonna have Matt Murray look at that. See how we can um, work on those property lines. He has a couple of ideas too, as well as the realtors to how we can get that to work out um, as. Properties move towards sale. So um. This is my next hurdle. Um, in addition to that hurdle, uh, I sent an email communication out to our. Uh, rental inspector, our building inspector that we contract with from uh, Duluth. Um, to see if uh, doing an inspection of the old Will's Hartle building is up his, is within his granders of this, of his license. Um, I kind of gave him a, a basic idea of what we were looking at. Um, you know. Reviewing the HVAC, the building itself, um, structural, that type of thing and seeing if that's something. He has a license to carry, if not a recommendation as to who, so that we can start working on that as part of that intense purchase. So that we can get a clear idea of the stability and where that building sits, use and not use. And I hope to hear something from him in a couple of weeks. I'll report that to you guys. Any other, any questions about the process yet at this point? Okay, I, I have not.
Cost that you have in here on the second page, because I just grabbed the full.
For Matt Murray?
Yeah.
That's, that's just gonna be a cost that we have to pay. The city will have to um, pay Murray in order to do this.
Of marking those and getting.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because we may have to live a property line.
I know. What you sent me.
Yeah.
Perhaps it's gonna be managed question.
Is if we had to, yeah, it's a possibility.
Okay.
Because it's the likelihood of the same person buying, the same entity buying both, both parcels and. I, I don't see it being the same, just from the feedback I'm getting from some people asking when the maintenance building can be ready for resale. There's, there's people that have industrial. Interests in it, but I just don't see these two being the same type of parties interested in purchase. Just to cover it safe, I think that's the best path.
Well, it's the right thing to do for future any.
I know, I know, and it better be us because it would be us anyway. It would be a closing.
Mm-hmm, it'd be a closing problem.
Right, we have to provide clear title. And we kind of don't have that for those, the way it's listed. Okay. Um, three D, um, I know you guys are itching to find a timeline. Um, I've submitted the full file for the deputy register and my name to the state for background check, Aaron VCA on Ingap. Um, I have attained a um. That, a quote on some signage to put in our windows from Ross Lewis and a logo.
I need to be.
I do.
Okay. Thought we knocked last.
I changed my mind. It came to me in the shower.
Wonderful, thank you.
I figured. It doesn't need to be that big as everybody, as I thought it was going. So um. Um, in my conversations with James LaSalle from DPS, um, they are trying to act that I are like as easy as possible. Uh, Kathy Booker from Subtapped and Steve Yerney, um, for treasure and half ways are both willing to come up and train. Paige and myself, as well as the extended on invitation for us to um, go to Cast Lake and actually work with them to learn. And get some real life experience before we go live, but our backgrounds have to be all done through um. Uh, DPS prior to be able to do that. So uh, work in progress, but we'll get there. Hopefully, I mean, you'll see later in the, in the meeting that I have provided some information about extris budget. So obviously, it's gonna be part of the budget. Any questions?
Yeah, the sign is gonna go in the window.
Yes.
So it's not some huge thing on the outside.
No, um, you know.
The whole time.
I do not want it to be super big. I asked for it to take up. Um, like two feet by four feet of the like the upper, upper section of one of those windows and it'll be an external window vinyl.
Hmm.
So it won't, obviously it'll show through, it won't be from the inside because the windows are tinted.
Hmm.
Um, and Ross Lewis will be able to do it on the outside and it'll be weather protected. So it'll stay up all winter long.
I know I'm gonna be getting help, kind of myself, but you got, we're talking about, we're gonna sign out on Ireland. Anyway, we could put something like with the, the um, I got signed to.
No, I'm not gonna do that.
Not allowed to. Technically, that would be advertising.
Well, that when they get down, then a new business, but I. I, I truly feel that that footprint down there, Don, is best suited for what we're gonna discuss in the business. I think the word is going to travel so fast. On this office having a DMV that every, because everybody I've spoken to since I've been notified that we were approved. Even folks I know in the Magi.
Yeah, they're, they're coming.
Are gonna come here. Um, folks that I know from North Home that are on the, the ambulance board. And when the Kellier and Oshish area are gonna come here, they're gonna stop going in this part, even that's what I keep hearing. And it might give Nispaw that opportunity for them to finally retire because I've heard rumors of them wanting to be done. But with the way the statute reads, um, you can't just move an office. Because you wanna um, move your business. I think they had thought about trying to move it to North Home at one point. But if you file as a deputy registrar, you must be a legal resident of the county that registrar is in. Um, unless of course you were an employee of a local government's entity and they're private.
Okay.
They're not governments, so they can't just pick up and go someplace because that's in Cooch County. So there's, there's legal things that are keeping them from being able to do some of the ideas they wanted to. Um, but getting back to my um, word of mouth thing, we can put it in the paper. Um, and we can, we can't physically advertise for it. We can just have signage out. And I just know that it's gonna travel fast.
And the financing of this, I assume it's gonna break even or not be a burden to proceed?
I don't think it's going to be, and I'll talk about that when I do my budget um, for you guys in new business. Um, I have some predictions based on the conversations I've had with them so far. Um, they provide. Um, the credit card machines and all the charges that go with it. So it's not an out of pocket to us. Um, we have to provide petty cash, um, you know, the office space. Um, a lock box for that petty cash, a locked area for the inventory. Um, obviously the payroll to provide um, the staff to do so. So if that ends up growing, that could be a potential where it would be more into um, upper level taxpayers, but. I. You get four dollars as an office per tab renewal. Okay, I mean, if you predict doing a ten thousand dollars and just tab renewals, that's only two hundred and fifty renewals a year. That's. There's two hundred and fifty vehicles in this town. And that's just this town. That doesn't, that doesn't include the three thousand school board. You know, entity that we provide and access to in this community. So I, I perceive being in your cash world for us. Any other questions on that? Okay, um, okay, so moving on to the annexation process, uh, Mr. Langlau called me twelve hours after our last meeting and apologized, but um, he. Uh, screwed up literally on the uh, on the annexation process because. The process that he provided to me that I read the first ordinance reading at the last, at the council meeting was if it was um. The property was abutting the municipal boundary.
Oh, so.
And he missed that language. So he's renewed the process, revised the process, excuse me. Provided me the documentation as to how to do this and then also included the fact that we have to go to Hines Township. And provide them the same documentation. Um, I kind of figured this was an issue, but I didn't question his process because I've only done detachments. I've never done annexations. So I assumed it was a complete reversal, but in taking a guidance, he's done this more than me. Um, and he said, yeah, you need both parties. When it's not um, abutting the boundary. So I've had uh, verbal conversations with the clerk from Hines Township. Their next council for the next board meeting is October twelfth, which is a Wednesday at seven o'clock. Um, I will be in attendance to that meeting. One council member with me would be preferred. Um, if. If I can't get somebody to come with me, that's fine. It's a Wednesday night. I already intend to go there. Um, because I need to provide to them the same documentation and be to the council and ask for their um, approval on this. Um, my immediate response from the clerk of Hines Township is it may be a sticky situation. So we'll just have to see what happens. Um, once we get their authorization, then this board can authorize it and then a few dollars to be opposite of the ministry appearance. At that point, it's, if both parties agree to it, just like the detachment, it's, it's all in paper after that. Questions?
I think we're all good with this.
They.
On.
Hines has not been approached on this period. Not from this office. Have you talked to them?
No.
Okay.
No, I haven't.
Are you possibly getting it confused with Missy's liquor license request from the adult course?
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay.
No, I just thought, I, I just thought that um. That annexed the, that call person, that everything, the park out there, everything, that was already all talked down. The height for tomorrow.
No. No. It will be. Okay, yep. Any other question?
It was October twelfth.
It is, at seven PM, at the Wednesday. It's two days after your council meeting.
Christina, if you, I'm. I wanna hundred percent hard to commit to it, but I will.
Be there? Okay, um. I'll talk to you after we adjourn. All right, and then if I could proceed down to three F, um. This is just a way I, um, the disaster declaration with FEMA. Um, Mike and I completed our inventory. Um, I've included that in your packet with some brief approximate costs. I still have some gaps to fill in as well. And so let you know that my first uh, Zoom meeting with um, Greg Cosby. He's gonna be our program delivery manager from FEMA is this Friday online. Um, at which point we'll go over, you know. The timeline and what things need to have happened. Um, and where we go from here on making our corrections to our damage inventory. We did add, oh, probably. Eight different streets and locations on the list. Yeah, it did grow, um.
Which you know, I said. Go to the idea.
Yeah, and you know, for what it's worth, there's still some locations, but I need to get some really hard numbers on. I mean, I included the. The roof um, for city hall as well as the police department because, you know, those continue to leak. Um, and I'm gonna have to find somebody that can actually look at it. And Mike and I throw around the city and up to the irrigation fields and we've added a few other areas where we saw some additional washout. Um. We've had communication with a couple of residents um, besides Dawn that live on Morris and there's washout up there too. That's pretty bad. Um, which has been kind of a problem in the past, but now it's really a problem. So a lot of it is gonna be materials and manpower related to do so. Maybe a couple of culverts. Any questions? Any questions?
Oh, I need to, how fast can they put it together?
Well, it's a reimbursement program now, so we fund everything.
Yeah.
And then we report to them how many hours and how much material was done and used to complete what we need to complete. Anything that was deemed an emergency repair. Must be done within six months of the declaration date, which was in July, so that puts us to January of this, this winter. And eighteen months for completed, but you can request. Extensions if you're having trouble finding materials or the funding to do so, because there are some townships that ran out of money this summer.
My question be, what are the, you know, are our definition and their definition of emergency repair the same? Is there a chance they could say new, this does not need it, we're not reimbursing you for that?
I can't comment on that, I'll ask them when I talk to them on Friday, but. A lot of what we already had on the damage inventory was already declared in April when we went to the first meeting, excuse me, in May.
Right.
And that was in that twenty-two page document that I provided to you guys with photos, that was what was provided to them then. That question was over that thirty-five hundred dollar minimum. I would say the most complicated estimate that, um, Mike's team and myself are new, I'm gonna have to put together is. Um, over on Third Street Southeast and Railroad. Because that was where the water main was broke in the wintertime, material was put in, obviously, material was frozen. Still, when the water came, bubbled all of that up, made more erosion and more problems back in that corner, so. That's gonna be something we're, we are gonna need some specialty estimations on. Anything else? That's it, um. Provided you have your, your Bemidji representative here and you don't have your citizens, that would encourage you, that's if you speak. In the new business first.
We can, we can move down to item C on new business. Welcome.
Dave does apologize for not being able to make it. Well, we know the Mijee is really popular. Had to do, so. Um, I'm told you, hear what's going on in Great Bemidji, happy to answer any questions that you might have. Um, and also say, I know that Dave's had a few meetings with the Development Corporation and has said that, you know, he's. And our organization is willing to help staff it, you know, as temporary, you know, to figure out. What some of the needs of the community are and how the Development Corp in conjunction with, um. Great Bemidji can help with some projects forward, so I think that's. Um, exciting, it's, it's good for us to get out of the Bemidji area and to now it's a good opportunity, so. A great partnership to start, so, um, are you all pretty familiar with Great Bemidji?
Yes, I am. But I am not, I recently moved back to the area about fourteen months ago.
Okay.
Being gone for so many decades, I won't.
Well, depending on how many decades, the organization has been around since the eighties. It was called, oh, okay, it used to be called the Joint Economic Development Corporation, uh. And in, oh, about ten years ago, it's, it went through a. Strategic planning, um, upon the retirement of its, uh, long-term executive director, and we changed its name to Greater Bemidji. Um, so I mean, at that point, it was very, I'd say it cleaned the Mijee focus, it was some of the banks that came to. Um, help fund it in the beginning, but with the focus on the new strategic plan, it was really to broaden that to. Sure include all of El Cami County, but even further than that, we do projects vaguely at times, um, so that's about the start. Gone, um, but all the way up to Kelyer too, so. Uh, so that happened about ten years ago, Dave became exactly right for that point, he's been with the organization ever since, and I. Came shortly after that, both of us came from Headwaters Regional Development Commission, I so wear a hat over there. On the finance side, and that's where I assist the city with revolving loan fund that we have here. Uh, so I've been with the organization for about seven years, and with HRDC for about sixteen. And so we have a board of about twenty-six, um, people, and if you look at their annual reports, they're all listed on the back. Uh, and you'll see Kevin Orville being is represented from this area. Okay, and this board, you know, obviously, you see the names and organizations, it's, it's a board of. People that have influence in the region, from, from banks to. The school districts to university to Otter Tail Power and El Cami Electric and. County representation, city representation from the city of Bemidji, um, school board, things like that, so. Um, it's definitely a group that is very passionate about what they do, and I really, our mission is really to. Drive prosperity and economic developments in the region, and we're a five oh one C three. So we often ask, uh, act as a fiscal agent for projects that are, um. Going to result in some economic developments, so funds will come through our organization. And get out in communities, so some of our, um, plans of action, there's a couple documents in there that can go over this, but we have. Areas that we really focus on, one is to really encourage entrepreneurship. And that really became a focus, I'd say, when we moved to our building, which is the Napolea Building next to Giovanni's, a two-story building downtown. We purchased that about seven years ago. And with that, we really ended up having this space where we could welcome people into that space. And being, you know, the showcase of front doors to the communities in our region to say, hey, we have, we have a boardroom that's. Pretty phenomenal. And so, you know, people come to the area, sometimes they're, they're expecting a small-town feel and, and we sometimes wanna shut off a little bit. So it is a space that people come, we have a boardroom table that fits twenty-six, that's the whole board. Uh, nice technology in there, if you need to do video conference Zoom calls, things like that. And it's, uh, a lot of our, our businesses in the area would use it to do recruiting, so Stanford has used it to interview doctors. Uh, we'll have lockers for your planning sessions at businesses and, and organizations and use that space. Uh, well, to accommodate that. Uh, but they also gave us a lot of extra space, and with that, we decided really to take time to, uh, encourage entrepreneurs. To have a place to go when we have questions, whether they're in startup phase, might be in a long-term business, so it depends on the struggles or looking to expand. Uh, and we want, we knew all the, there are a lot of resources in the community, but people didn't know where to go. We might, you know, run through the internet and figure out a name to call, and we eventually get to the right person, but we thought if we had a front door, people could walk in. Say, I have a question, where do we go, we get the right spot. So we developed what's called the Launchpad, it's one of our highlighting initiatives, and Launchpad is really just a one-stop shop for, for business. Um, businesses in startup phase and on up, in any age of your business. And we use it also as a coworking space, so it's kind of a new concept in rural Minnesota. But it's a place where remote workers, um, people in the startup phase, that really don't need a storefront quite yet, or a board storefront. Can utilize our space to operate this. Right now, we have, um, let's say we're in between fifty and sixty members. Uh, that some use it only once a month, others once a week, others are full-time, we have what we call camp sites. We have nine of those through our lower level of the Launchpad, and those are permanent spots that someone can call their home. So rents or membership levels ranging from fifteen dollars on up to about two hundred and seventy for one of those permanent spaces. Uh, so it's a, a great opportunity, and we also encourage our entrepreneurs in the area to meet. Uh, we weekly have what we call an entrepreneurs meetup, highlight a business or, um. A topic that's of interest to businesses and invite people in, anyone from the community to come and listen to these presentations. So that's been very popular over the last seven years. We have navigators that will sit one-on-one with business owners and talk through their ideas or their struggles, help them move through those challenges. Uh, and we also put on training, right now, we're doing a virtual training, uh, introduction with a group out of St. Cloud. This is about a twenty-four hundred dollar value for a ten-week session that we are offering free. And it's a real, um, intensive course called Mean Startup, to really get them from conception of an idea. Through to this, this plan that they can put into action, so just in the early stages of that program. That's one of our bigger initiatives, it's been going on since two thousand fifteen. Um, some of the other things that we do are include really growing, retaining and attracting talent. I'll know that is a, a real struggle and, and rough growth in the nation, but obviously, we feel it here. And a couple of things that we've been doing around that realm, it's called, um, the Minnesota Innovation Initiative, and we've. Shortened that to NI two, it's really our own custom training program, we partner with. The Idea Circle, um, and their staff to put on training that's customized to the businesses' needs, primarily in the manufacturing industry. But it can be other industries as well. So we have quite a few, um, people that will go through those programs, and we are recorded here, we say about hundred and twenty-five when we did the program last year. It's about a hundred and ten corporate sponsors throughout the region, when I say region, I'm talking pretty much all the way up to the northwest corner of the state. Um, and pretty much all northern Minnesota at some level, there's, um, up even in international calls and others. Businesses have committed to, um, partnering with us, figuring out a training program, and if they're either to up. Though their skills and their existing workforce, or maybe someone just needs to be able to totally change focus and, and. Um, try something huge that will fit their companies' needs. So that's been very successful, um. We have another thing that we're doing to attract and retain talent, it's called two-on-eight relocate. You might have heard that buzzword around, and then it kind of took off, I don't think we expected. The publicity we got from this, but it was really just a, a marketing tool to, um. Highlight Paul Bunyan Communication and Midco and all our internet opportunities in this area. Where we're really blessed by it, and we kind of take it for granted, and there's so many places around the world, you can even go to large cities that don't have what we have. Here locally, so that would be need to highlight this, and so we put together a campaign where we offered, I think initially it was twenty-five hundred dollars. Relocation costs to someone that would be considering moving to our area. That, um, was a remote worker, so this wasn't necessarily for any of our existing employers. But it was a remote worker that would take advantage of the many capabilities that we have. And in, we launched in two thousand twenty-one, we had thirty families in this town in two thousand twenty-one, and I think we have at least another twenty-five that. Um, this year, and we kind of ran out of money, so we, we moved the program around a little bit and found out that the money wasn't really. Right and ticket, it was, you know, the attraction was to the area that she was really bringing them, and that was a bonus, so. Right now, Paul Bunyan actually has offered some, like, I think it's six months or three, you know, that. Um, Big Zone Level, uh, for them, instead of those type of burn food costs, so. This has been changed a little bit, but it seems to still be attracting a lot of interest. Uh, along with that, it's a community concierge service, which we've had in the back of our minds for many years, where you have. Uh, folks that are being recruited by whether Sanford or Choice Therapy or any of these other businesses in town, they're bringing them to a community. And. Usually they have a traveling spouse with them, and it's like, you, you gotta sell both, you only sell half of that equation, usually it doesn't end up working so well. So, uh, this program really is almost like a welcoming week, we, we really partner with all kinds of individuals within our community that are passionate about. The Mijee area and region and say, hey, you know, would you be willing to, um, meet with the, this couple that's moving to town? Here's their interests, they line up with yours, and it's like you're an avid reader here, and I would be there, and we like the same looks you do, you know, well, we're trying to find all those little. Things that can connect people, and they, um, feel like they have someone that they know right away when they reach the community. And, and show them, you know, whether it's a school districts or arts and, and culture or, um. Recreation needs, you know, we get them, help them get plugged into those things. Uh, so I, I can't remember, we have more than a hundred people on that list that are, are community, um. Welcomers, and so that's been going really well, and that's, that's definitely available up here too, so I don't know how many we have specifically from the. Black Book area.
I don't know either, but I do know that it reached north.
Okay.
I do know.
Yeah, and it, it's, we've been utilizing a lot, I think it's starting to pick up a little bit more steam as people.
Has the school, that they know about the, the opportunity?
Our school board?
Yeah, I know the Mijee. I'm not sure, that's a good point. You'll reach out to them, make sure it's on their radar. Yeah, so, you know, that, just keep that in mind, that, you know, if you have someone that's.
Sure.
You know, things, you're just maybe need some other person, whether, you know, it could be someone from the Mijee, it could be, you know. Tell us what the talents are you looking for and those connections. Um, another area we work hard in, it's kind of a core piece of our business, is just. Supporting the growth and development of businesses, so those not necessarily in the. Early startup phase, but those that are in expansion phase, so we've helped many times in fabrics, for instance. Um, and a lot of times that means looking at how they could access some of the state level programs. We have the Minnesota Investment Fund, the Job Creation Fund, which is kind of a takeoff of the old Job Z program. And those are complex. Programs that's on their own, you, you, they, they're gonna just fall through cracks and get lost in the, in the process, but our organization can help walk. Through that application process with them, advocate for them. Uh, you know, I see another role that we play in the Mijee specifically is. Probably heard sometimes it can be a little challenging when it comes to what you're, um. How you make it through the, the ordinance process and the joint planning work process, and we can help kind of walk through that process with them too. So if there's any role we can play in that area, keep that, keep us in mind that we can be an advocate for those businesses.
You also work with small business organizations.
Small Business Development Center. Yep, yep, we actually often house them onsite when they're meeting with clients, so any of the SBC consultants, uh, we have a great relationship with. And we have our own, what we call navigators, I'm navigator Bud Kane, the owner of the Bemidji Brewing is a navigator, we have one other newer navigator. And we kind of play that role as well, so we often take team with SBC consultants. Provided to you for entrepreneurs who are, you know, working on your business plan. Um, an area that I think we spend quite a bit of time to, I'd say this is more Dave's realms on, uh, promoting the region and corporate recruitment. Kind of the old-fashioned economic development, go out and try to find that big smokestack and bring it in the town, right? Um, it's probably changed a, a lot in how we, what we're looking at, but you know, oftentimes it's around what our resources are like. The, um, wood industry, obviously, or, um, internet, and so we've looked at, um. The value of bringing a data center to the region, with the cold weather, right, and that's good for that. Um, and we have the internet resources, so that's one that we keep looking at opportunities there. Dave sits on a group of, um, site selectors nationwide, I think he's going to Chicago in about a week. To meet with a whole bunch of business leaders that are looking to find locations, so he's one of the, 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 Minnesota contingent that's going there. He has all kinds of ideas of what property within our region would be prime for relocating or empty buildings, you know, so. Buildings, that's fine number one, to make sure they're on his radar. Uh, and we're actually, actually working at increasing our website to be able to take some of those, um, sites in them on our website directly too. So that's, you know, definitely a kind of an old, um, form of economic development, but Delta Dental resulted from that. It took four years, so it can be, it's sometimes a very slow process, but it can be pretty fruitful, we stick with it. And once we get them here, it's, it's not too hard to sell them once they're here, and we do a pretty good job of rallying the, the community troops. Um, to show them, you know, why the Mijee is, you know, the Mijee region, you know, any. Any of the benefits, I mean, it's not. Um, and then the last area that we focus on is, uh, bold initiatives. Uh, I'd say, you know, a big one right now, has been for the last few years, is the Sports and Wellness Complex. Uh, that's in conjunction with, with the Sanford Health, and donated ten million dollars to give them to regions. My first time around, it didn't go very well, uh, this one is looking much more promising. My first time around, it didn't go very well. This one is looking much more promising. The location right now that we have our eye on is the rail corridor, really pretty much right behind our building. That property was owned by the city. It's needing to be redeveloped. And it's a city that's pretty underutilized for many years. Has a lot of challenges when it comes to that that needs to happen. But with the partnership of the city of the Minnogy, we're able to get access to brownfield dollars and be able to do some. Work that needs to go down and be able to use that space and bring it to life. So sounds like Chris Anderson is really at the point of committing to be the master developer. And with their partnership and, and they know that area very well, they developed in the eighties, the whole area that. Union Square area. So they're very committed to it. And I think we're real close to getting a purchase agreement until that might notice and we start moving forward. Last time Dave gave estimates, it sounded like infrastructure, it's starting next summer. And then the building's starting in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. And that impacts.
Yeah.
They have access to that type of facility and two sheets of ice, a big recreation space. It's multi-purpose, it could be pickle, you know, fifteen pickleball courts and then soccer field. Three hours later, you know, and aquatic centers. And then a wellness spot where they can make classrooms. Also, I know Sanford has a significant commitment to how do we make our, our community more healthy. And some of that is education. All the way up from the elementary level all the way to the D C. So they're doing a lot. I think they just finished up and we should be getting reports soon, but they've done quite a few listening sessions. Really hear what you want out of that space when it comes to cost and how to utilize that. I know there'll be a slight, we also, it's a skill to everyone. So that's definitely a project.
I know the, the last BDC meeting they had mentioned that wasn't that one of the reasons? One of their employees, that Choice Therapies employees didn't want relocate.
Live here.
Live in Black Duck.
Is because there was no place to work out.
There was no place to work out.
Yep. That's definitely an idea for our community as we work on areas that we want to attract more family. But I know that there's a lot of communities, smaller, even larger towns like in the Herman Town area where. Their health facility is, is, is really new too, but it's all within a twenty-five minute drive. So it isn't necessarily have to be centrally located in the town. We're not that far away from there for more Stanford, so.
Well, I'm thinking much smaller scale, obviously.
It'll happen.
Well, those are kind of the initiatives that are on our plate right now. One of the areas that we are finishing up some work on is childcare too. And so keep that in fact, it has been worth it for me, you know, it's affecting everyone. We had a grant that we received that we are getting out into two different projects in the Minnogy area right now. There was a license change by the state last year that allowed. Special family licenses to be more than one for a facility. So we have two churches in town. That will be taking advantage of that to be able to add three or four licenses to be able to expand the slots. So I know the Northwest Minnesota Foundation is partnering with them a lot and we want childcare and to so. Well, we'll see more and more initiatives. That would be another great topic. Our, our expert in that area did just leave us. That's here at Echinaut. So I'm trying my best to get up to speed on some of that, but we definitely, you know, figure out what your needs are and.
One of my side conversations with David. Conversation we've been having about moving the film library facility to a little parking building. And how maybe a partnership with Creators of Minnogy and Launchpad is a part of the battle, right? Room. Could work in that building because we're obviously going to have plenty of square footage to be able to offer heating rooms and that type of thing. So we have kind of a little bit of a vision and, you know, some, some need in some areas too. We just, we need some honing and probably some additional backing somewhere in order for that to. Move forward in the next three to five years of this.
At this point, you don't have the SBC consultants coming here on a regular basis.
Yeah. Yeah. And some major, some main location for them to need is, is going to be a benefit for the community, I think.
We are, we're working with Brent Lake right now, sharing things up there to connect with the entrepreneurs. She does, she has a fabulous incubator there, but she needs more staff. So we're asking staff for her to be with some of her clients. And just give a different perspective and take somebody to vote out of the place. So I could see us doing something similar where an afternoon, a month or a couple of times a month, we have someone located here. And you get the word out, so you know, there's someone who answers this question.
I'm going to ask them as we go.
Well, we're excited to see how we can move the needle a little bit. I thought you haven't been up here forever.
I know. It's been a quiet year, but we have been busy. Just not, not, not in your wheelhouse. For the, for the new facility for the public works and the police department too. You know, it is some turnover and some business ownership has just been really great. The school's making huge investment with their trades building, building a great big facility here now. And, you know, I, I keep telling the council that, that I see change. It's just moving slow and, you know, but it started, so, you know, it's good.
It's up to me, my car too. Our contact info is probably in some of the.
Anything else for Tiffany? Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming out.
That brings us to just outside of the block.
Okay. Path online, do you want to move forward with him? And I can circle back to the other citizen or folks.
That sounds better to Todd.
I, I think so too. Can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Great, great. Thanks for having, thanks for having me remote again. Appreciate it.
Anytime, as long as we can have you.
Yeah, well, I, it's my third meeting tonight, so you gotta like technology anyway. So Christina, you want me just to kind of start out kind of the story here?
Would you please? Because tax increment financing is not something I've even shared with the council.
Yeah.
Period. So even a, a small tutorial wouldn't be bad.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do my, I'll do my best without.
Only.
Without video.
Things we've had really would be what's on the league in Minnesota and stuff.
Yeah.
And that's kind of tip of the iceberg from what I.
Tax increment is difficult to understand unless you actually go through an actual.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So go ahead, Todd. I'm sorry. I won't interrupt.
No, that's fine. Just kind of trying to think about going back to the basics on this. So yeah, a lot of times we just jump in and assume everybody knows the terms and what it is. But I, you know, basically tax increment is, you know, it's the difference between the base value on a piece of property. And the new development value, right? So if you build a house on a piece of land and, but before you do that. You know, the piece of land has been paying property taxes to the county, the school and the city. And so tax increment kind of keeps that base value there distributed to those three taxing jurisdictions. And then let's say the new house that's built on, on top of it is actually where the tax increment would be. So it's really kind of an unrealized value that doesn't affect anybody's budgets. But what, what tax increment does is help then redirect those taxes. You know, so we get to capture the county and the school just with city council action. And then the city's tap property taxes to offset some sort of difficulty or. Something that's a, making the developer, the building difficult to build, right? So let's say maybe there was an old house there, some old building that needed to be demoed. Then tax increment can help with that and kind of, you know, make a level playing field that way. I think everybody kind of asks for it and everybody, I mean developers. And that kind of knowing if a city has a policy or have used it before, so they'll just come in and ask. In hopes that you'll just give them what they want. And so at Eller's, we try to go one step farther and kind of make them kind of prove up. That sort of extra. Issue that they have with that particular site. I mean, sometimes there's a stormwater or a sewer pipe going right through the middle of the lot. Needs to be rerouted. You know, nobody's, you know, had the money to do it. And so because of the new project development that's going to be on there, we have the developer pay for that upfront. And then, you know, then they get tax increment over time to reimburse themselves. So it's just kind of an initiative to get things moving since everybody has to pay property taxes, right? So we, it kind of exempts them in some respects, but it actually redirects the property taxes to. Kind of a need on that site, I guess. And I guess when you think of it in the housing context. It could be used to help lower rents, you know, kind of make housing more affordable, maybe apartment building that. You know, needs some help with lowering the rents to bring folks in. And need in the community, then tax increment can kind of help with that too. Sort of offsets the property taxes that way. So I don't know if that, if that helps a little bit or not. I know you guys have two housing districts in Black Duck now. And so there are some opportunities then now to use sort of what we call surplus tax increment. For other, either other housing related needs, like maybe public improvements too. Maybe, you know, the city can use it for, for streets or whatever that benefit like a qualified housing kind of area. Or, you know, the legislature's got some, a new, what they call spending plan. That we could use a couple of years of accumulated increment. That's not being obligated for, you know, to another developer and we can use it for, to help a private development. Virtually anyway, you know, and I think the legislature did that because of COVID, right? And all that, they just want to kind of, kind of spark development in, in cities. And so there's kind of a deadline for that. And, you know, you don't have to spend it. You don't have to do that. But, you know, if you don't have sort of this plan in place by the end of the year, then, you know, you don't have that opportunity. So, so that's kind of the, the reason I'm here is to kind of answer any questions you guys have on tax increment. I know I just kind of went through that quick, but also sort of. And what did he say about these opportunities that we can, you know, how much are we talking about? And what are the deadlines and what could we use it for? And how do we, you know, what do we need to do by the end of the year to kind of preserve our options?
Oh, real quick, the, the two tax increment, the two TIP projects that are in Black Duck right now. Is one dash four, which identifies what was Heritage House, which is now Serenity Living. That particular TIP that was, that was done paying its, its tax increment back in. You may have to help me with this. I want to say two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, third, twenty, two thousand thirteen, the district expires because there is a term limit on the districts too. These are legally like twenty-six year districts, but we usually cut the deal much shorter than that. But, you know, they can still accumulate tax increment. I think it expires at the end of twenty-three.
Okay. And then the second district that we have in town is one dash six. And that one represents the, the townhomes over by the shade store. And that was built by. Shoot, M M C D C.
M M C D C. Yep.
Yep. And that one, I don't think sunsets until thirty-one.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
We're still, we're still gaining increment on that. So essentially what happens is I get the property tax. Check twice a year and there's a section in there for the tax increment. And all of that money goes into the three seventy-six fund. So when you guys are looking at your fund balance statement that I provide to you every, every month, that's the three seventy-six fund. That is all the increment that we've, we've been receiving from one dash four and one dash six. Less the payments back to those developers twice a year. Sound right?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
So the, the email that I provided to you guys with the scenario, the spending plan from Todd. Is basically this, this temporary option that the state has allowed us to. Create a spending plan to use this, this excess increment for improvements, the other developments. Within the, the TIP district. Does that sound right?
Yeah. And what's nice about these is that, you know, each type of tax increment district has its own rules. So you get the best of both worlds here because a housing district, you can spend it anywhere in the city. And the spending plan allows you to do that too. So, so if you have a, a housing related, let's say public improvement, like I said earlier. Then you, you would probably just use the, the normal. The normal authority in the, in the housing tax increment law. Now, if you have a, a private developer that comes in that's not housing related and do just like some upfront, can prove up some upfront. Assistance need, then, you know, it doesn't have to be housing related under a spending plan. You can consider for anything demolition, land acquisition. But there you have to have a private developer kind of signing up when we're kind of doing the, you know, the deal, so to speak. It just can't be a public improvement under spending plans. You have the best of both worlds because you have two housing tax increment districts.
So the reason I wanted Todd to come to the meeting today to kind of give you guys this preview of this, this opportunity. This unobligate, unobligated increment is that there is a, a sunsetted timeline for us to be able to take advantage of this by statute. If we can create a spending plan and adopt it, then we have that unobligated to increment to be able to use. Within the city limits for. Street improvements.
Yep.
That we desperately need.
Yep.
We have not been able to find a funding source for. We've been having multitudes of conversations regarding Oscar Avenue. It's increased traffic between buses and businesses because of the addition of two new. Multi-family housing units as well as two businesses now. So we haven't been able to find out a way to first fix and repair the issues that we have that we assessed. The initial homeowners or the initial business owners on the section that has been assented. And we have a need to widen and finish off that section, that whole road. We know that it's got opportunities, right? My first reason for having Todd have this conversation with you is I'd like to pursue that as an opportunity to utilize these funds. To generate that type of result. And I believe in my conversations with Todd that the statute is going to allow us to do that.
Yep. As long, as long as it has a nexus or some relationship to, to affordable housing. Then we can use the original tax increment authority, you know, and if we go outside of that scope, then we, you know, consider the spending plan. So the spending plan also is just nice to have in your back pocket. And that's, you know, just requires a public hearing. And I think I sent Christina kind of all the sort of resolutions. And the little skinny little plan. It's just a one-page plan. It just kind of gets. You know, it gets, it gets you sort of set up for all the options, right? And, and we're not, I think we're, you know, so, so, so how much money are we talking about, right? And, and we're not, I think we're, you know, so, so, so how much money are we talking about, right? It's at, at this point, um, we know, we did the calculation just for the spending plan and it's, you know, almost a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. I mean, not a ton of money, but I mean, it's something extra, you know, for that. Um, I know the MM CDC housing district's got other parcels in it. And um, we did kind of do some research on that, even though that district will probably go all the way to the end. Um, and you know, to help out MM CDC on their particular piece of property. It appears that we're getting increment from the, some other parcels that don't have an obligation attached to them. So that is, I think what Christine is kind of saying is that that will continue to generate. Uh, increment, you know, if nobody asks for it and we're able to maybe do some public improvements and it will accumulate, you know, in the future.
Right. I do know those um, additional uh, properties Todd are, are north on Main Street here. And in uh, passing conversations, MM CDC. Does plan in twenty-three to build two single-family homes on those properties. So they've already received some credits from the state and they're working on their plans, but that won't be a build for twenty-two. That's a build for twenty-three, they're expecting. And Main Street's already been improved upon, so in the surrounding area, it's really not income-related for housing. Whereas their townhomes are income-based. The only concern I have of my idea about improving on Oscar and utilizing it is yes, it, it's within that nexus of area that. Um, uh, income-related housing, but if you go north towards the businesses and the new twenty-six. Um, unit rental, which is, you know, basically studio apartments, that's market-based. Does, do you know if that matters if we utilize that funding for the whole stretch of the street?
We can, we can portion it off, you know, I mean, it's probably going to cost a little bit, right, for the street. So maybe there's, you know, we can just kind of uh, portion it off and just have, you know, these dollars. Uh, go to help what's in front of those, you know what I mean? In front of those particular parcels, so depending on how large you, what the expenses of your project, I mean, streets are, they're not cheap, right? So.
No, and I think Mike is, Mike has brought some preliminary estimates to the council this year, anywhere from thirty-two to. Up.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly where you're going.
I, I know, I know it wasn't, it wasn't on the south side of thirty-two, if anything, it was higher.
One, two, seven.
And, and that was just to repair and replace the existing um, section that's been ripped up and that doesn't go past the townhomes.
I see. Well, I mean, that's, that's what, what's nice about this um. This is the, the tax increment that's already in place, you know, the plan and everything. You know, if, if we, you know, we might need to modify it, whatever, but that's. That's, that's already in place and that's an option we've got. And then the spending plan by the end of the year. Allows for, you know, more options. So I just, you know, a lot of the, the cities I work with are. You know, they just like that sort of opening up the box for other options too. And you know, we can get in the weeds as far as, you know, when we plan out a street project is to kind of. Really, like I say, get real specific on what we want to, you know, what we can use, what. What we can't use, you know, and so we can kind of talk about it at that, that time. But this is a good discussion of, you know, how that surplus could be, could be used and it gets everybody, I think, just kind of starting to think about it. So um, you know, it might help kind of move a project along. It's just good, it's good discussion and it's, you know, good education to, to move forward.
So would you recommend that the spending plan get adopted regardless of any strategic plan to put in place for it at this point?
You know, I, I, I would just because it's an opportunity that's out there and it's pretty broad. You know, as long as, as long as it goes to help a private developer, and I know we're talking public improvements. But it's not like you have to use it for that. It just kind of opens up again the options of somebody walking in the door and it's like, yeah, I need. You know, I'm proving up fifty thousand dollars of, of a gap I've got and now we're, we could say. You know, we've got it, you know, let's talk further and, and see if we can move forward with that. And um, you know, it might help with, with that. And um, we've got some pretty broad language we can put in that spending plan to keep us. You know, on the, on the right track basically, but uh, we don't have to like. Name names as far as a specific developer at this point. They pretty much are allowing kind of general. Language kind of as it comes, you know, because they understand that we don't, you know, some, some cities have, you know, these bigger metro cities. Have somebody on the hook all the time for, for something, looking for money, but you know, in outstate, it's like. You know, if we could set it up now and for somebody to walk in the door, it's just a great option to have.
Now, these sunset dates, they are for. Our timing to enact or to pass by resolution.
For the.
Spending plan.
For the spending plan, yep, the authority to transfer the increment, which would be. To hold a public hearing and approve the spending plan that expires at the end of this year. And then all transferred increment must be spent by the end of twenty-twenty-five. I mean, so you don't get a lot of time, but you know, you never know, you know. And then again, that the original tax increment authority for a housing district, that's always out there, that's. That's real flexible stuff, again, as long as there's like a nexus or relationship between uh, the, you know, the, the, the spending of it. And sort of, you know, who is benefiting and, and that can, you know, we can reach out pretty, pretty far with that too. And it doesn't necessarily have to be right against, you know, in, in a, a qualified housing project. We, we can get pretty, pretty creative, but we don't want to push it too much. We don't want to spark any audits from the state or anything, so.
As, as long as. Okay, I'm gonna redraft what I was gonna say. So in a scenario as it sits right now, without this unobligated increment spending, as it sits right now. Where that uh, balance is in our tax, in our TIP funds. If those funds are utilized in some way that benefits the actual project. They can be used now. So.
Yep.
The scenario I'm going to say is, okay, where the townhomes are located, there's a. Um, there's a fire hydrant there that needs some improvement to it and a couple of the lines. If we went and did what we needed to do to make sure that those are improved, because that was one of its main resources for, you know, fire protection and everything. For that particular how um, TIP district. Could we as a city be using those funds now regardless of this unoblig, this um, unobligated increment? Statute.
Yeah, regardless of the spending plan, that should, yep.
We could.
Yep, and we want to make sure that there's enough room in the original plan.
Okay.
Was done a long time, that there's enough sort of room in the budget. Uh, otherwise, we just need to go in and do a, a plan amendment modification. So yeah, that's already in place. That's kind of the mechanics of, of what's already there, yep.
Okay.
Okay, so if we, if we do it and we pass it and we have the public, we have a public hearing to, to amend it, do we have to have another public hearing and?
If there's not enough room in the budget, and I think, you know, I've got, you know, asked the analysts over here to make sure there's. You know, enough room in the original plan uh, to, to allow for additional spending, right? So for instance, if MM CDC, you know, starts building on another parcel, that's the same scenario too, though. And if they want some extra assistance on that, additional assistance that maybe wasn't in their first phases. We would have to kind of go through a plan modification too, or, you know, we could do a, a new tax increment district. You know, if they needed some extra, at some additional years, there's nothing that says we can't. Establish a new district for that particular piece of property.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it's kind of two different things.
Yep.
Okay, but for the same cause, if, if you want to say it that way, Max.
I've got it.
You just need to, um, as the entity that's holding that money. And I guess I can use the scenario of Main Street. If MM CDC came back and said, well, I want to be able to utilize some of those increments to help push these single-family homes. Over the line because we've got a gap, the city could help fund that.
Yep.
That's what it was utilized for. Plus, they're already part of that district because those parcels were part of it originally. So we would have, we would be obligated in this case to utilize those funds in that way. Am I saying that right, Todd?
Yeah, and, and, and I would, you know, if it's a big enough project, it's, it's well worth. You know, modifying that district plan anyway, just, just to keep, keep the, keep the fund balance up there, right? You know, you just need, just a little bit, it's still, it's still uh, worth an email to me. And a kind of a brainstorming session to kind of figure out, well, how could this benefit the city then in the future? You know, if they only need so much, I mean, it's, it's nice to, it's nice to be able to utilize it for, for us. For a public improvement.
Right.
My head's spinning right now with all kinds of different scenarios here.
Exactly, and that, that, that's when Todd brought this to me, this one that kind of sunset date. And we have to take action on the end of this year. That's where my brain was starting to come to. That's why I wanted him at the work session. Because there's, there's a laundry list of things that we could be using this, this increment for. And uh, my knowledge on it is so minute, I've never touched the money. But I didn't know where we were limited to. Um, and again, we have to look at what that budget was supposed to be used for originally. Because that was created back in the nineties. I want to say one-six was done.
Yeah, yeah, and, and another, you know, another nice thing about a housing district is, you know, the legislature on, on other districts. They kind of put a five-year limit on, you know, no new obligations, no new modifications to the plan. But a housing district is, um, you know, typically could spend it on qualified housing anywhere in the city. You can amend the plan anytime, you can enter into new obligations anytime, there's no limits on that. You know, it's really just to help out affordable housing. I get what the legislature is trying to do on that. And just try, try to make it as flexible as possible. It still needs that connection to, you know, to qualified housing. But again, the spending plan, boy, that doesn't hurt to consider adopting that, you know, and just kind of keep things flexible in case. You know, there's like a non-housing developer walks through the door and needs a little bit to. You know, a little bit of money upfront and it's, you know, that they can prove it up, you know, the gap and. And now we get another, you know, business or something in town, so.
So it sounds like we're go, I'm working on the spending plan. I'll work with you on those steps.
Yep.
So that we get that finalized by the end of the year.
Yep, that sounds, that sounds good. And then, and then, yeah, plug me in anytime. I mean, the, the best way these things work is. Is, you know, you, you think they're kind of goofy questions, but you know, you know, we, I don't charge for any of that. I mean, just throw it at me as much as you can. I mean, we've got enough resources that, Ellers, we got enough to do to absorb that. And, and I think it's, that's where really, that's where really, really good, you know, decisions and things are made. When you can um, just talk about them, don't keep it to yourself, uh, ask earlier rather than later. If this is an option, you know, and that's, that's when, you know, my clients just have the, you know, the best time with. You know, making these decisions is, um, is when you can kind of throw stuff out at us and we'll certainly come back with recommendations.
Any questions? Yeah, yeah, write all your notes down. I'll work with you on dates after uh, after.
Yep, yep, a lot of details to work out, um, you know, get this thing taken care of and then we can kind of get into the weeds. Uh, just to make sure it's set up, um, so we can rack quickly that, you know, anything that kind of comes, comes across. So yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the time, you guys. And again, if any of your council members. Uh, have any questions on tax increment too, I could, you know, there's some, you know, PowerPoint presentations that we've done for our seminars over here. That, that might help you along a little bit if just kind of click through them, you know, happy to send you over something like that too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Todd. Have a good night.
Yep, see you guys. Thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Well, we rearranged the agenda a couple of times.
That's fine, I'm on track.
Where are we at?
We are gonna, okay, I am going to circle back to um. Four B, I really have no input on four A, but I would like to discuss four B with the group regardless of. Um, Mr. Anger, not present. Right, don't mind. Just gonna take my stuff from off. I've got things I have to talk about today. Okay, so I, as you can tell, there's a couple of guests that did not show up tonight. I apologize, um, your first guest husband um, reached out to by Paige. Um, she was, uh, she actually showed up in City Hall last Tuesday. Said that she was going to be here tonight. She's still not here. Um, um, she unfortunately, even though Paige has asked and urged a reminder, has also requested no reminders as well. So I'm kind of stuck with um, not providing you guys any further information from Ms. Meyer. So I'm gonna move on to Mr. Anger. Um, Joey Anger owns um, the property at two twenty-four Carlson, at least on paper. As it seems. Um, back in two thousand nine, uh, the city received small um, cities. Uh, money from the state for housing rehab. The city provided probably two dozen homes and a couple of businesses, including, including Anderson Fabrics. And Black Duck Family Foods at that time, uh, some commercial rehab for HVAC. Roofing, siding, things like that. On the housing side, there was several um, contingencies on the promissory note. That the homeowners at that time who received the funding had to um, agree to. And by receiving these, this funding, it became a win of the call. There was language in the promissory note that also stated that after um, the homeowner had resided in the home. For a period of ten years from when um, that note was filed with the county. That the homeowner at that time would, could be allowed some forgiveness of that timeframe. Um, the owner, the previous owner, Sarah Huesman in oh-nine, received a little over seventeen thousand, almost eighteen thousand dollars. To do some rehab to two twenty-four Carlson, at which point um, shortly after that happened, she started renting the house. When I um, started in two thousand fourteen, um. The start, some of the forgiveness had started at that point. Um, we had started noticing. From my office that there were some people were renting these homes and it wasn't just this particular place. But there was a couple others, so I urged the council um, at that time to um. Uh, start some deficiencies notices to these homeowners so that we weren't stuck with not only, you know. Looking bad because we weren't doing our due diligence and holding these people accountable for quote free money. Um, but it just, it was the right thing to do. So there was three particular homeowners at that time. Two of the three um, paid their debt or did what they were needed, that were requested them to do. We got the attorney at that time, Brian Keeson, um, involved. And the um, Huesman case uh, ended up in a judgment on the. Um, you can, as you read the documents that I did supply to you, and I'm so thankful I took their notes. Um, that uh, it, it appears as though Ms. Huesman never planned on um, keeping the home. Um, there was conversation about renting it right away. Um, there's even a letter that was provided to the previous administrator. Um, basically stating that the uh, Huesman had never planned on keeping the home. I think that was the scanned letter that you guys may not have been able to read. It was pretty, it's pretty light. Um, I don't know if you were able to.
Could you read that?
I, I can.
For us?
Yeah.
Just so. Because it was very. It was very bad.
Yeah, sorry guys, a lot of these are copies of what I have had, so.
And that is a letter from the subject?
Uh, I'll read it and then you'll get your answer. It says, to whom it may concern, I am a friend of Sarah Huesman, she received a BICAP weatherization loan in the spring of oh nine. She explained to me that she didn't have to pay it back as long as she lived there for ten years. The house is located at two twenty-four Carlson Avenue North in Black Tech, Minnesota, she no longer lives there. And never intended to honor the terms of the loan. In fact, she got another loan on the property and lied about the loan with BICAP before it was recorded. I'm a contractor that was, that has worked with uh Putas, Putasik. The same as HRDC. On similar projects and have seen the good it has done, it bothers me to see people take advantage um of these programs. Uh sincerely anonymous, that was sent to the city based on this property. Um, as you see the original letter sent to Miss Huesman in sixteen, uh record basically states the. What the city knew, um she had done with the property ending up in a new owner, Miss. Um, Mr. Anger, who was supposed to be here tonight, he was the one that's asking for forgiveness. So, um, after a couple of months of dealing with Miss Huesman, receiving some letters back and forth. As I stated earlier, I, the council. Agreed to report with the judgments on the property and it's been sitting on there since two thousand sixteen. So, uh, Mr. Anger um approached on me last week. Um, he's, he's back in town, he's in the house, um. Apparently, he's been paying property taxes on it, um and is asking for this forgiveness, um. In order to to meet the the qualifications of this of this project with small cities too, the city had the opportunity to file. Um, and um have a resolution approved allowing that forgiveness. But there's particular details that includes that as well, you know, and it says you can provide the forgiveness on a case-by-case basis. Um. But. In this case, I I would not encourage the city um take the judgment off the property, um I talked with Keeson. Um. Couple days after I spoke with Mr. Anger, um. Just tried to bring myself up to speed to see if he had heard anything changing on the judgment and. Uh, if you go into the county recorders, it's it's clearly a judgment still on the property, so. My conversation with Anger was, you know, he's looking to sell it, well, he can't sell it without clear title, well, this loan's gonna stay on there until the city. Holds it or somebody pays the city seventeen grand. I'm not recommending that this judgment ever be pulled. She did the wrong thing, he found out after he didn't, she. Apparently gave him a deed and never recorded it either, and that's one of the reasons he's in this pickle.
It's a seventeen thousand dollar education.
Seventeen thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollar education. But yes, it's unfortunate.
How could she have a deed?
Good question, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, not my problem.
Okay.
Yep. Um, so he approached the city asking for this forgiveness, um I basically, I know is. I told him what has happened since sixteen, I told him what the city's knowledge was on it. I explained to him that it would be his request of this board. For that forgiveness, but it is my responsibility to provide this board. The backstory, right? Um, he basically said, so I need to sue her, and I'm like. You could do whatever you want, but I don't think the city is gonna remove this judgment on this property. I don't encourage the. This current board to do so, so I, I, it's unfortunate Mr. Anger's not here to argue his own case.
That to me speaks volumes.
Well, I can't.
I.
Yeah.
Yeah, but just to hit the high point, he he apparently did not investigate this at the time of sale.
No, and I will tell you one of the reasons. In my experience in nine years, Ron, is that there's a lot of people in this town. That do a lot of things, contract for deed under the table with a handshake, assuming everything was on the up and up. But they don't follow through.
No.
With the correct legal details to make it right.
They don't check the title. Cause what I I recently got my abstract of the title, uh it's safe deposit box, and I go all the way back to nineteen hundred. But it was the US government property.
Right.
It was needed to M D Stone, this entire area.
You make sure you're doing.
Soldiers.
Yes.
Land.
Yeah, you make sure you're doing what you're supposed to if you want that property, right? You just can't assume that. You know, my dad got it on a handshake and a car or something like that, or five chickens and a boat, it doesn't matter.
I've got pages back in nineteen ninety, so. All right, well. You've done your.
Yep.
I I would second the motion if the subject is not here to make personal appeal.
Yeah.
There's no appeal there.
So I I was gonna present that, the backstory to the board regardless of Joey's appearance, so.
Oh, is it something we're gonna have to vote on now?
I don't believe so, because there's.
There's been no.
There's been no formal action since two thousand sixteen and no additional action needs to be taken unless the board agrees to forgive him. That, that, that for, that judgment will stay on there unless.
Pardon me, I guess what I'm asking is, is do we formally need to say, new? At a council meeting? Because he's formally said, yes, can I, can you do this for me?
He's not, he's not here to ask for it.
That's where I'm at.
So to me, there's no action, all I did was inform you guys of all the information so that he knows. He needs to be here present to ask for that forgiveness. Just like the chamber when they wanna ask for money for a donation, I'm not doing it for him.
The same with the water and stuff with.
Yeah.
We've had this before.
Correct. It needs to be a request of the council, I'm not you.
Alright.
So if it presides. Proceeds in front from that particular. You know, resource, then Sylvia, you can take action at that time, but you know the backstory, so you can make a good judgment, that's my responsibility.
So, I just have one question. So the judgment went on their heart, I'm not, I'm this house at two twenty-four Carlson. But can't the. And I know this costs a lot of money, you can't. Like BICAP or whoever gave the guy, I mean, can't you go after the, the suit of use and herself? Or Sarah Houston?
The city already put judgment on it that way.
Yeah.
And she uh in one of those letters I supplied to stated that she was gonna make good on it, she tried to make communication with Brian Keeson. That ended up not happening according to her. And nothing else went through with it.
Okay.
That's when the judgment got filed. So we, we gave her an appropriate amount of time. To come and make good on the money, or at least a spending plan of some type payment plan. Along with the two other um people and and she said she tried. To communicate with her attorney at that time and got no feedback from him, and then it just died, so we filed the judgment. And it stayed there ever since.
Maybe she needs a new attorney. Moving on.
Moving on. Um, alright. Uh, I'm not gonna eat.
That's where.
You guys are a little confused. So this is a request that I did state to Mr. Pouch that I would speak on his behalf because he is um. Supposedly at a doctor appointment or something like that come today. I told him I would at least give you guys the backstory, and he can come to your October meeting and ask. So I've provided you guys an aerial photo um down by Third Street and. And uh, mill.
Mill.
Um, adjacent to Mr. Pouch's property to the north is a. In a triangular piece of property that's owned by the state, part of the old rail bed. Um, he too has had a conversation um. With the state, kinda in the same respects as what the co-op is doing, and he's interested in. He's potentially interested in buying. A portion of this parcel from the state.
A portion.
Well. While we looked at, he and I both looked at the plat map. His, this particular parcel of land only recommend. Uh represents three lots, he thought it was four. And he needs to decide if those lots are worth buying. But his ask is going to be, if it is so, may he move forward. With the same process as the city has agreed to by revolution with the co-op. As working as the judiciary in between the states because. They can't buy property from the state, the state has to sell it to a local federal government entity. And walk around that way. Remember how we did that with the co-op?
Really, yep.
So, um, Phil and I went to the plat map, we, we looked at the parcel. Um, description and we figured out how many of those lots that this parcel actually makes up and where that land. Line is, if you look in this aerial photo in that triangular case, you're gonna see um. A darker line that runs west east that looks like the low area of this parcel, he's thinking he'd like to own. Up to that, but he thought that the lot lines. Stopped at a certain point, so he's still gonna do a little bit of his homework. He also needs to understand what kind of a value it might have on it in order for it to be worth it for him to purchase. But what he's entertaining is if the city. Is willing to be that in-between, like we're doing for the co-op, that he'd like to ask for that. Once he figures out what he wants to do, then a formal request will come in from the, of this board.
Can I ask which parcel we're speaking of here?
Yes, of course, um.
What's the number of that?
Uh, three one seven.
Three one seven zero zero?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's kind of highlighted in blue, Ron, it's just very.
No, I thought that's what it was, but you computed when you said the black line, I didn't see.
Oh, you know what I'm referring to is the tree line.
Oh.
Kind of like a dip in the, in the parcel itself, there's.
There's a culvert there.
There's a culvert there, there's a contour there that drops down in in elevation considerably. Yep. So I can't state for certain that this is gonna come in front of the board in October, but my timeline with him was. I will do this for you. But you need to come to the next meeting if this is what you want and you need to ask. And he understands that. It might be that issue, I don't know. I did what I request the post to do. Um, moving down the agenda to F, um. Uh, Mike and I have been working on um. Revising the uh advertising signs on the right away on seventy-one. Um, our first hurdle was to come up with um a new. A new and a logo for Pine Tree Park Calendar, that's completed, that's. This top one here. I wonder if I should share my screen.
I'm gonna need it anyway. Yeah. That's this guy here. So, um, we worked with Pinnacle Marketing Group and they created that logo for us and we have something we could market and do signage for. And in the last couple of weeks, I've been working with Ross Lewis Sign Company. To um come up with a concept for a new um sign to replace the existing one down in that right away. We already have um a license with the state of Minnesota for an advertising sign that can't exceed three hundred square feet. Um, what uh we wanna do is rip out what we exist in one have and replace it with a double-sided signage that looks similar to this. Um, that four thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars is if Ross Lewis installed it. If we just order the signage, which will be. Ten by twelve. Each side. It'll be thirty-six hundred dollars. Um, and we'll do the installation. We are all.
Problem with that, Mike? Nope.
And neither does, neither does Misty, actually, she was part of this concept. My other backside to this is, Mike and I have also been working with the state, we have two older. Directional. Signs for the golf course and the campground that are on both sections of seventy-one as you come into town. And are just those, you know, the state signs horribly faded. Um, that too costs us anywhere from three to six hundred dollars. For two sets of those if we wanted to replace those as well as well.
We need them, yeah.
Well.
Three to six hundred?
There he is.
No.
It goes on, it's work, goes on.
Yeah.
Square feet on those.
Were inches.
Square inches. Originally, when Mike and I started working, we started working with the state on on updating those two signs, they're both brown. No one knows where they are, you don't see them, there's so many signs as you come into town that gets lost. Now that we've received, you know, some, some sketches. And concepts of this and pricing, I'm more inclined to augment those state signs completely and just go with this.
Really?
Never see it in a longer.
Nope, and you won't, you have to slow down once you get to family foods. But they're there.
You're too busy watching the forty-five mile an hour speed limit.
They're there.
I mean, gas prices.
Yep. Oh.
Well.
We were gonna go ahead and do it anyway, but I figured I thought I'd tell you guys if you wanna do this. Cause you haven't seen the logo either. I asked, where would they be located?
Same places where the old rundown Pine Tree Park sign is.
Okay.
Cause that's where we have jurisdictional license for.
So it's two signs in? Or one?
It's one big sign that's Pine Tree Park, that old dilapidated.
I know which sign it is, but I, this looks like.
But this will be two-sided.
Okay.
Yep, you'll see it in both directions and it'll be twice as high as what the existing one is now. Yep, the only thing that I'd like to do. Put some life on it, but we don't have power to it, um, we think it'll be seen. A lot better than what we have right now with the towers here. Well, there was an option with a white background that we next that.
What, what are they, yeah?
So if you've been to the beach. Okay, it's been similar to the beach signs. Yep.
Are the old faded signs that nobody sees, that's something we're. Burning paying for.
No.
It's a one.
It was a one-time thing, that's why they look so good. Um, if you drive into like Turtle River, come into the Midgee and you see those directional signs that says. You know, Perkins or Country Kitchen or whatever, you know, it's those types of signs that you get a license from. I'm more inclined to just pull anything out of the road. Cause no one sees them anyway, and they're very, very faded, you can't, you can't read them unless you slow down.
It would be nice. Well. So you know, they advertise for the, you know.
You said you were already gonna do it, didn't you?
I originally, well, yes, yes, the other signs, I need to find out how much they would cost first, same with this conference, we need to start somewhere so we can at least get a dollar amount. So we had an idea of what we could weigh in on, I think this is gonna make a bigger impact. Than the other signs obviously do, regardless of the faded or not, and.
The, the, it's right there, you know, pass road. Are we trying to grab people then to the golf course inside?
That was never my intention. That would be extra. And we would need an additional license. For it, if we have to be the type that are in town that.
Just curious, I mean, you had, you had Misty involved, so I was wondering if you maybe mentioned.
What we did speak about though, um, where this started was. Um, Mike and I wanted to um consolidate and clean up the signage on the corner. Uh, of the park right there by the lake road. And the golf course, because we have numerous resorts that are utilizing utilizing city-owned property for their advertising and it's a cluster. And we don't even have any directional signage for our campground on that corner. And we would also uh add and replace the existing signing. As you go into the park. With a similar concept. And Misty wants to use similar signing to replace the existing on number six.
Good.
So there would be a clean direction, same story, if you will.
We're gonna have a little bit of flow.
See, so you're gonna see a flow, but we wanna get this one done this year. And look towards budgeting the other one, two, three. Potentially for, for the beach signs, um, in twenty-three.
Let's do it.
That's what I told Ross Lewis and like, I'd really like to dig in the ground this year. So I think they know that we're in a hurry and they can, they can get it done as long as we can get them up. You got Chris back, you got time now.
I'm the guy with fifteen bone restriction.
He'll be done by then. All we need is an auger.
I put it up.
I know.
Yeah, say those a thousand dollars and.
The posts that are actually currently there. Aren't in that bad of shape, really. Um, we're gonna go ahead and paint them, get them to, obviously imagine the signs, but. Structurally, the posts are in good shape. The rest of the sign is falling apart.
But we maybe wanna. Since we're putting that much into that sign. You want, should we put in posts in? Just so it's nice and neat, everything looks the same uniform.
We need some pretty beefy posts.
You know, what's there is. I, I mean, wood is wood. You know, it's, they're, they're six by six posts is what they are, they're, they're not. Falling apart, they're not rotting, I don't know. I mean, once I take the inner portion of the sign out. You know, maybe I can look at them a little bit more, but. It's one of those things that.
We could reuse them someplace.
You know, but, but if we're gonna spend that money to buy those on what's there, but the way that it's set up. Then you're gonna be, I mean, you're not gonna be quite up to their price of install, but you'll be a lot closer. Cause I mean, you know, with the size of this, ten by twelve or.
Twelve by eight, two twelve by eight signs.
Whatever it came out to be. I mean, by the time you get your, your post above ground and then when you're in ground. We have some posts there and the way that it's set up, it's not just. One six by six post, you know, there's two on each side, so there's a total of four, then actually there's a center. You know, a weight bearing, it's quite a bit.
Well, Jimmy Electric's not using a post on there.
No, no, and I don't think they plan it's gonna be done soon. But I, to me, if we can put a coat of black paint on them.
Right.
I don't see the point in spending, you know, a bunch more money there.
Are the posts currently in a V shape?
No, it won't be in a V shape either.
That was just a concept from Ross Lewis.
Yeah.
Yep. I believe when I spoke with her and sent an email, I said back to back, but. Um, I don't think she really has a good concept of the intersection regardless of who's sending some photos of what we exist in right now.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna move forward for that.
Do that on the agenda.
Hey. So, moving on to. Worked it back in. I'm only gonna blow up what I mean to blow up, you guys. So the fight of committee meeting minutes are the first thing that I said that included on this, just because. I figured you probably want some back information from the last meeting to today. That's how it ended on the A. Obviously, there's been some information that's come. In front of me since I'm including the. Including, um. Excuse me, the DMV. So as I move forward into this budget. Um, if you guys have questions, please go ahead and stop me. So I'm gonna go through these two, first two pages very briefly. Um, I will go through the individual departments and just do a few highlights for you. And then I'll go into the debt, um, schedules and the V for options that I provided. And then at the end, um, I'll give you a five year comparison. On potential, uh, city costs to a residential taxpayer. And then I wanna touch real briefly on the library as well as, um, where the council is sitting. Um, so on this page here, I've broken the twenty-three, uh, budget. Into two sections, your revenue and obviously your expenditures. The first section, um, states that I've got a preliminary levy increase to three thousand eight. Three hundred and eight thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars, that's. Option A, that's listed further down into this packet. Um, which basically is a dollar increase of all just shy of forty-four thousand dollars. Your LGA, um, was confirmed with an increase of six thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars for the general fund. Um, I am, uh, being a little modest when it comes to the liquor fund transfer and decreasing it fifteen thousand. But what I am adding to the general fund is a potential new revenue of ten thousand dollars for the DMV. As it is no longer not in this year's budget. Um, and then we're going to budget moving some of the last administrative money, um, into the general fund from the A or B funding as well. Which will still provide enough money for Mike to finish, um, his sewer, um, improvements that the councils already approved. Any questions on revenue highlights at this point? Okay, moving down to the expenditures, um, um, in number eight. The first item is that the, um, personnel committee has met and between the personnel and the finance, they're recommending that the. Minimum wage increases that have happened since two thousand eighteen. Being, um, adopted for your primary, uh, full-time employees that were not. Um, included in those minimum wage increases when they happened. Um, you'll see in the packet in October that the, met, um, the wage scales. Are changing to include what that dollar nine for those five years of minimum wage. Increases were not applied for, for the rest of the, the city's wage ranges. Um, we're represent, recommending a three percent cola for our full-time officer, our deputy clerk, the administrator, public works director and our two maintenance staff. You'll note that we are not including interim chief with those increases, um, my side conversations. With our interim chief, um, have concluded that the current contract we have with him will maintain. Moving down the list, our health insurance premium, as you saw in the council packet is only a five percent increase per employee. Um, or a thirty dollar and eighty-eight cent per employee monthly to six hundred forty-eight, thirty dollars, six hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Um, your healthcare savings account contribution has no change. The dental insurance is increasing two dollars and twenty-nine cents. From its current, um, there's no full-time employee increase for para. Um, for your coordinated as well as your police and fire, that does not change. Um, and that pretty much takes care of the payroll and the labor, um, contributions. Um, B, your overall increase to the prior budget was two thousand three hundred and five dollars, which of course the townships approved on August twenty-sixth at the budget meeting. Moving down in police, the overall increase to the budget was two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, we kept it very, um, modest because we don't have a chief yet. Um, but what, uh, Frank and I did do after consideration with. The finance committee is, we've agreed to delete the, um, depreciation for the squads. In the two thousand twenty-three budget, because the two thousand fourteen squad hasn't really been moving for a year. Um, so we're gonna push out its replacement to two thousand twenty-four. Questions so far? Uh, the street lighting budget was a nominal increase of eleven hundred dollars, we're continuing the, um, to keep working on modifying to LED. Um, and we've increased a little bit for the utilities because electricity, water, everything's gone up. Uh, the library is probably the biggest conversation, um, we're recommending an increase of eleven thousand twenty-nine dollars. The majority of that is in a ten thousand dollar increase to account for the sale or acquisition of both buildings. The street budget, street budget, streets budget, that is an increase of seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Um, we increased all the budget lines about three percent each. To account for cost of goods, utilities, fuel costs, um, insurance premiums, I will touch on at the end here. Um, and any increased costs that we had to consider for the new facility for operating, heating, lighting, that type of thing. Moving down to parks, um, very small increase to that budget of six hundred and forty-nine dollars. That includes building maintenance, some materials will continue on the restroom. Um, we're including eleven hundred dollars for waste removal for our major city festivals, right now we pay anyway, but we've never budgeted for it. And then again, for insurance premiums increasing. The administrative budget, um, overall increase was nine thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and I'll touch on that too because. Of Jay, um, and building and planning, that's actually a decrease because we don't have rental inspections in two thousand twenty-three. We only do those in the even years. The license center is a new department, I'm estimating a ten thousand dollar, um, budget for that. But I'm also estimating a ten thousand dollar revenue for it as well. So what I've done is I've taken eleven percent of my payroll for the administrative. Departments and it moved it into the license. Fund. Or excuse me, the licensed department, so instead of. X of percentage of mine and, uh, the clerk's wages being funded just in the administration. I'm taking a portion of that and putting it into the license center, so it's still housed underneath the general funds. But as we spread out. Our payroll. You know, X percentage of mine and a clerk's, um, wages get funded from different departments. So I'm just moving that needle over into that fund. Nick, do you follow me so well?
Hmm.
Okay. Yeah. When I grow open like. Um, and then I put some nominal expenses in there for operating, twelve hundred bucks, postage, that type of thing. Um, the biggest kick is that, uh, League of Minnesota City is, is budgeting and asking, um. The premiums to be estimated in more than five hundred and two percent increases for this year. And that covers anything from properties, auto to workers.
Since we have such an inflation. Rate right now, is that the reason for?
It is, it is, it is inflation, but it is also workers' comp issues, um.
They're huge.
They are huge, um, if I look at the specific areas that are covered by workers' comp, I mean, we fund almost. Ten to twelve thousand dollars just in the workers' comp line for our police department. Um, and that's pretty on par for the whole state. Um, there's not really much you can do about that. And they want everybody to be prepared for it, typically, I usually only estimate somewhere between three to five percent for all auto property. Liability and work comp and that was a big hit from the league, they said. Plan high, because we don't know where those are gonna come, we don't know what kind of claims are gonna come out in the next year, they want everybody to be prepared. So I planned five. And actually, I planned, I planned low on the high end of all the scales, some of them were. Three to eight percent and I kinda stuck myself in the middle, workers' comp was anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent and I planned fifteen. So I'm still hoping because. Our track record on claims is very low, that that will help. When we have our, um, experience modification, just help. My insurance.
True.
Um, and then at the very end of that page, I noted that, um, obviously the minimum wage is gonna increase again for all of our ten employees and another twenty-six cents. So minimum wage will be at ten dollars and fifty-nine cents, um, on January first, which will take into effect, um, all the part-time people that we exist in, we have anybody that we hire after. Uh, moving down to the departments. I have the revenue summary on the third page three. Um, the biggest thing, I guess I'd like to point out is, um, I have accounted for. Uh, the healthcare reimbursement from statute to ninety-nine A for para for our, um, previous, uh, police chief. As a reimbursement. Um, and then the license center is showing up under charges for service. Uh, and then that federal grant and aid from the American Rescue Act is, um, noted at the top in that fifteen thousand. The bottom of this page, you see, um, each department's total, um, cost, its percentage. Increase or decrease over twenty-two, what twenty-two is actual year-to-date spends and what the budget is, so you can kinda see that where that forty-nine thousand nine oh eight came in. Questions? For those of you that have never been through this process, I need, there's many, many moving parts of this, um, the debt, the debt is one of them.
Are you a hundred percent sure on that liquor store transfer?
Meaning?
I mean.
That, like, that's all we can get out of them? Or that that, or that they're gonna be able to account for that?
Or go both ways?
I can go both ways. Am I sure, Max? No, I'm not. I'm trying to be some safe, but I've got some other things kinda worked in as I get down to the page that I'll, I'll try to share with you, some of my ideas. Um. Anything on the administrative department, uh, that I spoke about the license center, I noted. I reduced the payroll, um, a, um, eleven percent between the, the clerk and myself in all of those categories. For expenses and moved it into the license center budget, which is the last of these pages. Um. Anything else that's marked in there and red is, is me just calculating out where all of our contracted services go. The police budget. Pretty much speaks for itself, I've got the listings of what those increases in the insurance are in green. In the column down there. Um, your employer health and paid health insurance line includes, um, our previous employee. And you'll see that the, uh, depreciation was not there. The fire department, um, has already been approved by your. Townships that we support, I noted the insurance changes in green again. Moving to streets, um, Mike and I planned, like I stated earlier. Uh, a modest three percent across the board. For his operating. The Wayside Rest Park. Um, again, the insurance, the waste management keynote and then additional continued upgrades to the restrooms. What, if you guys have questions? And then the, the page that includes the library, um, I, I'm just gonna jump down to that section, that's the third one, second one at the bottom. You'll see I'd planned ten thousand dollars for estimated closing costs, increase the insurance. And, um, recommended that, uh, we pay the full ask of sixteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars plus the, um. Three hundred and fifty dollars for their tech, uh, to care less next year. The ask was from, actually, the, the state minimum is twelve thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, we are budgeting as we always do, what care less? And then the license centers at the bottom of that page, you'll see where those, um, payroll dollars move in. And then the operating, and one of the reasons that I did this was because. If. If this takes off. And it gets to the point where we need to hire like maybe a halftime. I have a, a part-time person to come and fill in. Maybe a twenty hour, we'll have some little room in the budget to be able to account for that. Whether it's minor pages wages. Whether it's minor pages wages, I need to, but I, like I stated earlier. Just, just renewal of the loan tabs, that's. Very, very modest that I'm expecting for revenues. It could way exceed that ten thousand dollars. But it is supposed to pay for itself. Um, we have the opportunity by statute to either keep this in the general funds or make it a special revenue fund, like maybe cemetery. I prefer it to be in your general funds because it's gonna be this office that provides the service. It doesn't make any sense to me not to provide that as a service and a revenue. To the general government. And one of our arguments that we've been struggling with, the people that are continuing wanting to detach from this. Entity is that we don't provide them any service. Even though we have a police department, a fire department, right? And a library. So now we have another service to provide the public. And not just our municipal boundary. So hopefully, this will solve one of those arguments to a future person that wants to be attached. So those are the departments. I'm gonna go through. I'm just gonna stop me for questions. So, um, Ron, I know you've been part of this process before, so I'll just kind of give you some real brief understanding. Um, I meet with all the department's heads for that are housed underneath the general, the general government, the general fund, excuse me. Um, we go through their preliminary budget and what they need. I go through all the payroll schedules for everybody and I factor them into those. I need to have the LGA, the local government certified by the state first. Need to have that fire department budget kind of worked out. And um, kind of get an idea of what I think the liquor store is gonna be able to contribute to make that property tax net from, you know. The last number we're trying to help relate on. Playing into that is not just the expenditures that the general fund has, but also what we debt, our debt levy is. And what we levy for those payments on that debt levy too. Okay, that's where this schedule comes into play. There's a center column there, a marked property tax. On the very far left, you'll see all the different types of debt. Some of them don't have anything in that property tax column, and that's because their debt may be. Funded completely by revenue, whether it's a utility revenue. Or a special revenue like the liquor stores improvements or the golf course by that case. Based on previous numbers for previous years, this would, um. These would be the funds that would need property taxes to fund their debt. In the past three years now, twenty-two included fifty percent of two of the debts that the golf course has is being funded by. Property taxes. The other half is being funded by our liquor store. Okay, and. In a couple of these options, what I'm asking the council to consider is to. Provide the liquor store just a little bit more time to regenerate up their cash balances. So they can come back where they need to in order to provide more in the future. Given how slow this year was, I'm a little apprehensive about what we're gonna be able to do in twenty-three. And I would rather be more conservative than say, oh yeah, seventy-five, let's go for it, right? And then put us in such a serious situation. So in this option, um, this option includes the ten thousand dollars. For the library's sales and acquisition that I stated earlier. It also provides that, um, two thousand twelve equipment debt. In the golf course to be a hundred percent funded by taxes instead of fifty percent funded by the liquor store. That would also take another five thousand off of the liquor store's transfers that we would have already done. Um, in previous years. That provides a full, um, property tax for just debt of fifty-five thousand three seventy-eight. Including with the general fund making an increase over this year of six point three percent for eleven. Three hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. So, that's option A. If I move down to option B. Option B is similar, but what we do is. Instead of a hundred percent of that two thousand twelve golf debt being funded by property taxes. We go back to the way we're doing it right now, fifty percent of it is being funded. And it's just that one debt. We still keep the ten thousand dollars in the library fund for the sale and acquisition. But now, your percent levy increases only five percent. Everybody with me so far? Option C. Omit that library fund. We're not gonna put ten grand in there. We're never gonna sell that library. We're never gonna, the other one, let's just assume that they bet it doesn't happen. Um, the other thing that we don't do, that we do is we keep fifty percent of that debt for the golf course. Of a transfer to the liquor store instead of putting it all on the taxes. That gives you a two percent increase over this year. Of a total of three hundred and forty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Pretty small, less than five thousand dollar increase over this year, not much. Then my last brainstorm was up to option D, but before I get to D. I wanna touch on this page. Okay, and the reason I wanna touch on this page is because this provides you guys your calculation. As to what a true taxpayer is gonna pay because of your home state exclusion, okay? So your net tax capacity. I've grown fifteen percent over last year. Last year's increase was only two percent. So what that does for you is it spreads that dollar amount of your debt and your tax burden. Further out because valuations are higher too. Your estimated market value and your taxable market value have gone up respectively between fourteen and fifteen percent. Over last year. So what this shows you between options A through D, and I'll get through the details of D here in a minute. Is what a person that owns a hundred thousand dollar home after your home state exclusion would pay for your city. Probably taxes, city. I'm gonna put anybody else, just pity, eh? If you see in two thousand twenty-two, the average amount would have been seven hundred and eleven dollars. But now that your net tax capacity has increased over forty grand, or excuse me, four hundred and seven thousand dollars. Your personal contribution has shrunk below that. Okay, which in my mind gives us some little warm wiggle room. But I'm still trying to be very cautious because in two years, the other debt that we're paying on. For the two thousand nine debt will also sunset and then our payments for the public works police facility are gonna start, right? So I wanna try to mitigate the next two years of gender, general fund operations without dropping the levy too much. To create a huge spike again in two years. Okay, so what can we do to accomplish that? What we can do is provide the city, maybe option D. What option D would do for you is take and let's add a little bit more money into the general fund. Let's give Mike what he means. Let's give some street materials back in where we started three years ago with sixty thousand dollars and then because our budget got too high. Shrunk it back to on the twenty that we've been working on for the last two decades. What that'll do is increase it eight percent though, over this year. Yep. So we're always looking at the two numbers, right? We're always looking at the percentage, are always looking at what that dollar amount is that I'm gonna pay. Because they both shock us. But if you look at that spreadsheet that I gave you. At the end, do you see how much option D is gonna be? Still gonna be less than what you're paying this year. But only by, but only ten dollars, not even well, let's see, when eighteen dollars more than option A. And all we did was give Mike ten thousand dollars more in his streets budget by doing that. The question is, are you willing to have that percentage on your paper? Or not? And what I can tell you is. The biggest conversation that we've heard in the last month has been the library and what the, what the county's gonna do. What the county's gonna do tomorrow night and what, that's why I provided you their work packet. I'm going to this meeting tomorrow. We really wanna know what they do. Um, Tom Berry specifically said. What did he say? What he said? Is that the twenty-three preliminary budget has been established and it's six point eight two percent. Over this year, county. The levy includes the fun, funding K R L S at fiscal year twenty-two level of four hundred and eight thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars. Which is what they're paying right now.
They did not include, they did not agree to take it up in.
And the difference compared to what K R L S provided them a work budget sheet on is twelve thousand two hundred and two dollars. Even if the cities ended up absorbing that on a percentage base, Black Tech would only take on like thirteen hundred dollars of that. From my calculations, but I don't foresee care less pushing that to the ranches. I mean, they'll take it out of their operating reserves before they push it on to us. So I don't think. That this, our city branch isn't any risk of closing or shutting down or all these. Exorbitant conversations that people have been having because they jumped to a bunch of conclusions. I think the library is gonna.
But it took them a long time in the last meeting to even say that they had put. The budget in and, and, and the reason they did it was because they can't decrease it once. Right, once they set up that budget that they're looking at. So they put the max in being last year's budget.
Right, and they're right.
Yeah, it makes sense.
I mean, if you read through this two hundred and twenty-four page document, which I did today, okay? It's a, it's a nine million dollar increase and that doesn't even include that jail project yet. And they're trying to be very modest on this, but they have a lot of things they need to fix. Their staffing is one of them.
For sure.
Okay, and they know it. And it's unfortunate, but it's kind of a double edged sword. We need the county and the county needs us. There's a lot of resources that we get from them. So we need to be on board with them too. So. That's my report. This is where I'm at. It is, so I know I said I was gonna shut up, but we do have one more work session, Nick, Mike and I do on Thursday. We can make any other changes after this.
Jumping out at you right now, but. Do you wanna spit out or nobody forgets or?
So really from your examples, someone who's paid taxes this year is saving fifty dollars.
Yes, because your net tax capacity has increased. Yeah.
Not because we're lowering anything, just.
Do you think if you get that bill, am I gonna pay her? I wish it'd be for my taxes, by the way.
Well, they, they, they shouldn't care.
Well, they should, but I think the biggest thing would be if it came just from a.
Well, and.
Well, who wants their taxes to go up?
Nobody.
Okay, so let me just, let me just, let you guys know that there's a number of factors that make this. This number happen and what I gave you guys is just an estimate based on one residential home value, right? We have a lot of commercial property in town. Theirs will be higher, obviously, right? But one of our detriments is we have a lot of non-taxable property in town. The townships don't. Unless they've got a cemetery or a church in town or even their town hall. That's about it unless it's taxed at them because it's undeveloped. Um, but this is gonna be pretty consistent across the whole county. Because your property values went up. Right, everybody's profit, property market value has gone up a minimum of twenty-three to twenty-five percent.
You know.
So that, that needle, that, that percentage is gonna carry through all the rest of the factors that contribute to your levy. That's why the net tax capacity is higher too, because the valuations are higher. Did I lose anyone?
No, we're just all frustrated. Frustrated, but. Kind of a loss is why we're frustrated. We've been working on this constantly for. Month now.
You didn't work, but the people haven't been working on it and that it's not. It, still, no matter how you shake this trio. Eventually, one day, it's gonna catch up.
They need to elaborate on that, Max, because we look at the percentage and the number, I mean, everyone.
The only reason that you're good, the only reason that things are what they are is because of where they estimated everyone's taxes.
So it's a win and a loss all at the same time, right?
And that's where it's frustrating.
Of course it is, but.
But not just for this city that's happening.
Because I'm not the only one in the boat does not necessarily make it better.
No, it doesn't. So. Let's, let's just assume for the sake of argument that we didn't get the DMV. And I pulled that ten thousand dollars out. The numbers would be higher. We wouldn't have that revenue. Or even if I put fifteen back in from the liquor store transfer, it's gonna only go down about two percent. Your numbers here are gonna reflect the same. It's a play.
But if you take a ten thousand out of the budget for D M V, if you think you're gonna make ten thousand to wash.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to say to you guys. You can play with ten grand all you want. It's not gonna make that big of a difference. I'm just trying to point out the major changes that I think will help. Because there's several points to this budget that you can't change. And as modest as we came down with the, with the financial numbers. You know, you, you really even, even option A, it's still only a forty-four thousand dollar increase. Over this year, that's it. Last year we was higher, was fifty-one. So what do I need from you guys right now? Circling back. I know if I give you too many options, it's too many decisions. But I felt it necessary to at least give you a couple of scenarios. So we have some guidance to go back on Thursday because I also wanna see what the county does on Tuesday. But we need some guidance as to where you would rather see the numbers so that we can come to it because I can't come to your meeting on Monday. With four more options. I would honestly prefer no options. I would prefer it to be narrowed down to one. And again, keep in mind, you can always reduce it by December, but you cannot increase it.
There's that line, I love that line.
You're welcome.
That's a great line.
You're welcome. But that's what the county should. But that's what the county should know for too, in my conversations with Nate Matthews from Bemidji, they're shooting for seven percent as well. So it's pretty on par for this whole county.
Bemidji?
Yeah.
I heard it was five.
Nate Matthews told me it was six point eight.
I heard on the radio that they were their preliminary was five percent.
Okay, well, that's good. They must have narrowed some more of the labor unions down since I spoke about. That's good.
When was the last time we had a mill rate low ninety?
Uh, it's been a while. Uh nineteen, two thousand nineteen, if you look to the left there. That that's also one of the things that is a big sticker for me is 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 having a lower mill rate is is much safer. We do have very high mill rate, but there's a lot of things that contribute to that too. You can only you can only tax people. As far as you can, I mean, for net tax capacity and mill rate, if you're at a hundred percent of your net tax capacity, that's. Not good. That's giving you room for go.
Well, I guess I'm I'd be more inclined to play around with option D, Christina. If I had to pick. From what? I have in front of me. What do you mean by play around? It can always go down.
It just can't go up. It's the highest option.
Well, there you go. See? That's what I mean. It's frustrating because that's the that's where the world we it's where this works. It's not a way to describe it.
Nick, you've been a part of this process. What are your thoughts? I mean, when you and I met last, we didn't have the license center factored into that.
Yeah.
You and I discussed the library, but we didn't have the sickness. We're we're when you left that night, what were you thinking? That afternoon, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so option A.
Yep.
But that was before that.
Right.
And like you said, two years in the future.
You see, there's your eighty-nine versus ninety-two.
Yeah.
It's. And. No, we do need to move ahead with this, with the library project, with other. Street projects with other.
But for a library that's. Not open Mondays, half days on other every other day. And I could see if it would be more.
We tried.
And.
We got cut back.
Just listened to a presentation.
No, I know.
Tiffany bedding, you know, that. Hey, greater remains is gonna be, they might. Be willing to help out.
We have another possibility too.
Well, I mean, to have an office or something in there, another reason to keep the library open, another.
Well, the problem will be, if to be honest, is funding the library. Because K O S, I mean, we tried this year to have an increase, and we asked for more hours. But if they get cut at the county level all the time.
And if also they drop there, I'll even ten more.
They won't. I don't think they'll do that.
This office's opinion, if the city ends up with that building. Your librarian is not managing that building. The city is.
What's that mean?
What that means is we will be more than a landlord. I think we need to have presence in that building to keep the operating right, because it'll not just be a library.
Well, I think that's true. We've already talked about it not being just the one.
Right, but. We need. And this is just a gap that needs to happen regardless, Miriam. So what I mean by saying that is we need better connection between the library and the city.
I agree.
Because what we have right now and what we've had in the past haven't been enough. I mean, it's getting better, but it's not there yet. If we're gonna make a huge investment in a much bigger facility, we need to make sure the whole building is being done.
With with it being Lori. She's been more. Active and that type of thing, and so.
Oh, by all means.
That's helped a lot.
It does.
And I think. And Max, sit on the line, but once you became mayor, you kind of. I think we've had better meetings and connections this year than we've seen in the past.
I agree.
So.
Ron, I guess I want, I'd like to hear some individual. You know, mine too. Cause this is Ron's first rodeo. Yeah.
Voting for the most, the highest increases of tough.
Sure.
Do you wanna have it narrowed down to one option by the meeting?
I would say. Well, yes, ideally, I'd like that narrowed down, because I need some direction. I I mean, typically, at the special meeting, the only thing that we discuss is this. And I provide you the resolution to approve it so that I can submit it by the thirtieth.
And that's where you sit there with your little white pen and. Try to make it go down. Well, I'd like to see it now, a lower option.
Okay.
I mean, multiple options in this point onward, maybe.
Okay.
So we'll have to leave and face the citizens of town. Build.
Well, yeah, and you know, two weeks ago, I was building a city hall, so. You know.
So I'd be a bit more conservative.
Okay. So more like B or C.
Hmm.
Right? Don.
I like the.
This is gonna go well.
Well, I really wish Lori would give. So I'm gonna give you all four. We're gonna make a decision on Monday night. I'm not changing a thing. I'll give you four reasons for resolutions to adapt. I'm not changing anything, and you guys can figure it out. No, I'm joking. I have to do the work for you. I really do need to narrow it down a little further. I I mean, the money could be moved in either pot, and it's only gonna, it's still gonna end up in the same dollar amount and same percentage, you know? Whether I take five out of here or ten out of one, to the other one, I'm still gonna end up relatively close. It can't exceed the eight, but it won't be lower than the two.
All right.
So what are you guys not telling me?
The reason I'd be inclined for the more expensive option. Is just because of the future. That being said, what we learned at the B D C meeting last. Bemidji. Is the fastest growing area in the state. Those folks, and it's not the city of Bemidji itself, the city limits proper. It is the townships. And those folks are gonna be moving north. Five, six years from now. We have to be ready. If we're not ready. You're you're gonna lose out. If you don't have that library across the street that provides all the services that are being missed by. I don't know, did I not see in the. Hell, Trammy County Packet that the Health and Human Services or Health Services was cut, correct?
Yeah.
By how much was that? Three million?
Uh, it was, but a lot of that is because the Red Lake um project is funding a bunch of that, and that comes directly from the state, so that's offsetting it.
Still kind of a cut. It's a lot of programs.
But the programs aren't technically getting cut. They're just getting cut from a different resource.
Yeah.
They're still there. They're just being funded differently.
You you can say. It's three million, it's three million. I don't, you're not gonna convince me.
Okay.
That's.
That's fine.
Then that's. Not technically. But that. It can fill a gap.
In another two years, are people going up another eight percent? Well, it says it's gonna be a trend every.
I don't know. If you have an inflation rate at the rate we have right now. I mean, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't believe it.
Some of those numbers are starting to flatten out, though. I just can't, we we really just don't know. I mean, the nation doesn't know what's gonna happen with that.
Now with diesel, where it is, moving everything around by trucks.
Or rail. Okay, well, we could be here all night.
Yeah, we could.
And I and I don't know if you really wanna do that or not.
We we got the input. That's the technicality of that one. Can't go into the next day.
This is a this is a five year look back as to where you're in to see if. That's grown. Typically, I don't give you these numbers until I do your truth and taxation. That's how much the. Um, net tax capacity is increased over each year.
Play this year as a win and. I I'm telling you right now that the future is coming quick and.
What what I foresee.
You don't wanna be behind this one.
What I foresee happening is this. So if you just narrow it down by dollars. Okay, just look at it by dollars, that forty-four thousand dollars, okay, maybe forty-five. And you compare it to where the county is increasing theirs to nine million, what that bubble down to a person. Or excuse me, a taxpayer is gonna look a whole lot different at the county level than it is the city level, but what could happen. To a residence that's paying taxes is your city. Tax, not your percentage, your city tax will drop. But your county will go up and offset. So relatively speaking. You could be paying exactly what you're paying twenty-two and twenty-three people. Do you guys follow me? It is a scenario that bubble up may bubble down that way, just because.
If it wasn't spinning fast enough, it probably will play through.
You can look at the big picture is what I'm trying to ask you guys to do is is, you know, you. When you get your property tax statement, you see where everybody's is going up or down, up or down, up or down, and you see that very end percentage. Overall, overall. Uh. You can in eight percent and a seven percent don't make fifteen percent increase. Right? Because the other numbers have a lot to play into it.
And I think in the city, you don't want to have everybody moving this way, and then they look at our roads and streets and say. Oh, I think I'll go on further telling it or something like that.
And that's unfortunate, but that is that is the risk that.
Oh, there are people moving. Where are they?
Well, that's why I think. It's more people, or you may have annex some more ground into the city. And then you increase.
And that's why we're doing that annexing, this, we're learning.
There's no actual property.
Yeah.
On that.
Right, but it's a good learning process.
Oh, you don't know how to deal with the next.
There you go, see? We even had a little mistake with our current annexing. So I don't know where you wanna put it, guys.
So in two years, we're gonna start making payments on the new building.
You have one that's on sets and.
But on your on your debt schedule that I provided to done, that on. Uh, three oh seven, two thousand and seven, property tax is gone in twenty-three, because we made our last payment this year. And that's two thousand nine, the three oh nine debt, seventeen thousand, that will go away by twenty-four. So the two of those will be gone, and the city's facility will take over those two, which pretty much encompasses about thirty. Maybe forty. Just shy of forty thousand dollars. That we were paying as a last year together. And so we still have to make our interim interest payment next year. And that can, we cannot levy for that either, so that's gonna come out of reserves. Until we're back to where we need to be when that payment comes in. Now, and depending upon where everything falls into play on sign line. We may only have to pay. One of those interest payments, not all. Just kind of depends on how the project ends up and where we can close with USDA. The sooner we can close, the better we are.
That's good, Nick.
Yeah.
I hear that I explained.
Yep. Yeah, I believe. Um, on. Well, if you just looked at. Even option D. On all of these bond schedules. You'll see. Um. Over here, it says go bond twenty-two temp. And it's got like twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and some odd dollars. On it, that's not factored into your total debt payment on near the bottom of that column, because we can't levy for it. That's what your interest is gonna be. For the interim financing. Is there something more that you guys have questions that I haven't been providing to?
No, I don't think so.
I I want to make sure you guys understand it. I mean, I I understand that it's a moving animal, and it's really complex point. So the best I can narrow it down. And simplify it, I would like to. So you guys can translate it.
And the goal here is to avoid having more than one option at the public council meeting, is that correct?
So. The preliminary levy has to be set by the end of this month, and we have to turn that into a county in the collective. That's what you see on your proposed twenty-three tax statement that you'll receive in November. Okay. By statute, you can't increase that. By your truth and taxation hearing, which is typically your December meeting. Where I'll provide the whole review of everything we just did and where we landed on our number. If we make any cuts at that point, we. Can cut that levy down a little bit. Um. But I have to give them something by September thirtieth, so that they have something to report to the taxpayers. So having one number is the only thing I can give them. I can't give them four. You adopted in the form of a resolution. And I send all of the debt payments that we can levy for, as well as what the general fund need is to the county, and that translates to what you see on your property tax data.
That's by the end of the month, and our council meeting is after.
Your council, you have a special council meeting on the twenty-sixth, the next Monday, only to adopt the preliminary levy.
That's the only reason we're here.
So I timed it this way so that we can have this conversation with you then. Prior to the county adopting their preliminary levies. Prior to the county adopting their preliminary levy tomorrow night. So that the finance committee can come back Thursday afternoon and then maybe hash out anything, because I was really concerned with what we're gonna do for the library. And how it would affect us. Not to worry right now, but still kind of curious. And then we'll adopt our preliminary levies, all of that is done. We just have to have it into the county, uh, verified September thirtieth. So this will be a complete separate meeting from your October regular meeting. Interim time between September and your truth and taxation meeting, which is the December fifth council meeting. If the finance committee or this board says, sorry, you gotta find fifteen grand, then we do that. But you have to start somewhere. We did that last year. We had a pretty high number, I think we had like.
It was ridiculous.
It was like fourteen or fifteen percent or something like that, and then I moved some money from the A R V funding into the general fund for administration and police. Um, recruitment. And um that dropped at fifteen grand, and we dropped it down to whatever the twelve percent was, but it was still pretty high. There was still an audience here on the December. Doesn't matter, and you know what?
And the year before that, it had gone down.
But but, yeah, but. The year before that, we kept it even max.
And then it was crickets.
We. I encourage people to show up, because you don't know what you're paying unless you ask, right? And then now we finally got some people interested in what's really going on, and that's good, but we were also planning a big construction project too. A lot of factors tied into that.
So that's where I'm. That's where I'm at, I don't know if there's a gather that you wanna approve temporarily approved. Option B, the high end. Submit, submit the high end.
Yeah, I can, I can make three, four versions of a resolution for you guys, if you want me to do that, and you just pick which one.
Well, I don't know you're ready now.
I mean, it it's gonna be.
Vote on, it's gonna be.
It's gonna be a vote, so. Okay, well, Nick and Mike and I, we need to get on, and we'll see if there's anything else we can do differently, but I just don't see where that can change. When something happens over the next three days. Um, if you have the time and you're good with board, I encourage you to go through this packet from the county building, county meeting for tomorrow. This is the most comprehensive preliminary budget. Department reports from the county has ever seen. It not only gives you a really good understanding of what each and each department does for this county, but it also. Gives you a really good understanding of their budget and what they work with and how they, and where they get their funding. And as a Bell Trammy County taxpayer, there's things in here I didn't know. What did you know seventy percent of the land in the state, in the county is untaxable?
Yes.
Seventy percent.
Swamp.
But it's not just because of that, it's because all the rest of the stuff that's.
There's a lot of other stuff.
That's churches and schools and everything. Think of all those charter schools all of a sudden. That used to be commercial property in Bemidji and are not taxable now.
Really big chunk in the center that's not taxable either.
Right.
Really.
A really big chunk. So, you know, it it's an eye opener. When you put a big number like that on it.
Also before it's county and state.
It is. It's also got the highest crime rate in the capital. Okay.
So without being able to say yes, Christina.
Okay.
A, B, C, or D?
Okay. Back to the drawing board. Well, good.
Unless you guys wanna keep talking about this. Because this is where we can talk about it.
All you guys can make a motion on Monday and sit and discuss for two hours if you want before you call a vote. And you can amend that vote, and then you can make another one. I just keep, I'll just try to keep you straight.
All right. Motion to adjourn. All favor.
Aye, aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, Christina.
You're welcome. Yeah.